I'm calling the January 14th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Education to order per government code, Section 54950 at Secutor and education code 35140 at Secutor at 3:35 PM. As trustee Todd Frazier will be participating via teleconference, all votes will be taken by roll call. Closed session. We will now be adjourning to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following matters. 3.1 Public employee discipline dismissal suspension release leave reassignment non-relection, non-reappointment resignation reinstatement pursuant to government code 54957. Personnel matters, public employee employment pursuant to government code 54957. Acting superintendent, acting assistant superintendent, H. Human Resources interim assistant superintendent administrative services. 3.1 Conference with labor negotiations, labor negotiator unrepresented, acting superintendent, acting assistant superintendent, human resources interim assistant superintendent administrative services, agency designated representative Todd Robbins, Atkinson, Anderson, Lloyd, Lund, and Romo. 3.4 Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph D2 of government code, Section 54956.92 cases. Prop 39 Request for facilities from Magnolia Public School. Prop 39 requests for district facilities from California Republic Leadership Academy. 3.5 Conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph D2 of government code, Section 54956.91 case. District Board Action on Orange County School of Computer Science Request for Approval of Material Revisions. 3.6 Conference with legal counsel existing litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph 2 or 3 of subdivision D of Section 54956.91, multiple cases, complaints filed by various district employees. 3.7 Conference with legal counsel existing litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph 2 or 3 of subdivision D of Section 54956.91, one case, Macklinum versus P Y L U S D. 3.8 Claims. General liability claim number 648749 and general liability claim number 6488854. It seems that we have several people wanting to speak tonight. If there's anybody else here that has not filled out a blue card, if you could please do that right now, so we have everyone's cards. We have 31, 32 speakers, or 33 speakers, so everybody will be given one minute. And I just wanted to make a quick statement. I know there's been a lot of interest on social media and things like that out there of our closed session, and I just want to remind everybody that approval of the material revision will not change this year's school at Orange County School of Computer Science only next school year, just as a denial of this revision does not change the current status of Orange County School of Computer Science this year or next. Okay? So, just so we're all talking about, have correct information. So, first up, I'll call four at a time. Mark Fury, Patrick Gaffoni, Latifa Beckel, and Nellie Raphael.
Hello, Mark Fury. Obviously, there's probably a lot of confusion going on over the last month of what's been going on, but can you clarify, when you're going to close session, who is the legal counsel? And I would assume that legal counsel for ongoing litigation would be the legal firm that's been, you know, on staff for a long time, and it seems like there's been a new legal team hired for any new litigation. So, if you could just clarify that, and then can somebody just summarize exactly why seven people are on administrative leave, so the public has a better idea? Thank you.
Patrick?
I am a retired educator. I came back out of retirement to help start the Orange County School of Computer Science. I will say that you need to vote in favor of it. I have never seen a better facility or a better-run facility. I have never worked with a better team in 40 years of employment. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Is she not here?
She's outside for a minute.
Okay. Nellie?
Well, I've spoken here before about overall operations. Tonight is personal. My kids will attend OCSCS, and as I witness the incredible opportunities available to students, I eagerly anticipate my own children being part of this community. I can already envision the projects they'll create, the care they'll receive from dedicated teachers and staff, and the growth they'll experience in their learning journey. The proposed petition revision seeks changes that are standard among charter schools. OCSCS is the only charter in OC not following these structures while the other 46 do. Supporting this petition ensures our P Y L U S D charter remains competitive and continues to provide outstanding education. Thank you.
Okay. The next four, if they can come forward, so we can move quickly. Ariana D., and then Koala Ipeyilun Kabler. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Eric, and Beth Fisher.
Hello, proud OCSCS parent here. What an absolutely amazing, exciting, steam-forward opportunity for our students in this district. Despite living in Yorba Linda for over 15 years, this is the first time that we have put our daughter in public school. Why? Because until this point, there has never been a school in this district that has challenged and excited her the way that private education has. My daughter wants to be a Disney Imagineer when she grows up. The Innovation Lab at OCSCS is truly the most incredible, well-rounded, amazing opportunity for kids at this school to learn a variety of engineering subjects. It's like Disney Imagineering, all wrapped up into one big, beautiful lab. As Yorba Linda resident, I am so proud that my tax dollars have gone into creating this safe, exciting place for my daughter and other students to create engineering opportunities and learn these skills. And for the first time, we have a school where she longs to go to and looks forward to attending every single day. How many other schools can claim this? Additionally, the teachers that Dr. Fisher have amassed at OCSCS are some of the most incredible, dedicated, hard-working teachers.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Aloha to the board members and the community, and I'm a grandparent of the student in this district, and I'm here to speak on behalf of OCSCS. As someone who has seen generations of my family go through different educational systems, and as one who faced significant adversity and lived in a rural indigenous community, I know how important it is for the school to truly serve its community. Good schooling makes a difference, and great schooling can change the outcome of the lives of the kids in ways we cannot imagine. Industry certifications mean faster access to higher-paying jobs while students study in college. OCSCS has proven itself as a place where students thrive and innovative learning is happening, and they have all--
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much.
As you can see, by the way, I'm dressed. I happen to be a pastor, but I'm also a husband and father, and most happily, a grandfather of two grandchildren who will be attending, who do attend school here in the P Y L U S D district. The welfare of these grandchildren indeed, and all of your children, is dear to my heart, and they and you are all in my prayers. A closed session will soon be called, where the future of our children hangs in the balance. Dr. Fisher and her very able team have assembled a charter school within the district that is proving to be highly successful in reaching our children, giving them a deepening thirst for learning, and it's yielding great results. But now I fear that bureaucracy is prioritizing the comfort of adults over the resources and learning of our dear children. To you who are the parents behind me here, this OCSC family is important. This is your school. Children who are here, this is your school.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. Obviously, I think most people know that I have a role as a principal within our schools, and I am the very proud principal of OCSCS, but I also stand before you today as a neighbor. So, as we go in and look at these changes for OCSCS, I would like to advocate, not only as a principal, but as a mother of two who will have kids who will attend OCSCS. Now, I'm going to go back into the principal part of it. I want to thank on behalf of our staff trustee Quintero, and I would like our parents to know that trustee Quintero spent over three hours inquiring about the charter school. She marked up the petition documents, and so I do, I know that there are parents watching, and I know you can't really see my face, but so many of you reached out saying that you're at work, but you're going to tune in. So, parents, we just want you to know that this is a great opportunity for us to come together in unity, and we look forward to continuing to work together.
The next four speakers, Ali, Corinne, Mrs. Bradowski, or Brod-- and Ben Stubbs.
Where I come from, school is boring, but my teachers try the best that they can do. At OCSCS, it makes a whole difference, so come together to make OCSCS an even better place. I also want to support Mr. Piano. He used to be my sub, and now he teaches at OCSCS. He makes awesome stuff with a 3D printer and teaches kids how to make hands. He is an amazing teacher, and I hope you will support OCSCS so he can teach me those fun things.
Thank you. Corinne?
There's an accessibility issue, and I'm going to read Corinne's--
Okay.
--her speech, and I have not, I've read it through once, so pardon me if I can't go as quickly. I know she timed it. Marilyn and Carrie, whatever lawsuits come our way, this is on you. Carrie, you've cost our district millions with your mass lawsuit in 2022, and now illegal cab bonds that homeowners will soon be paying back for your fiscal irresponsibility. Marilyn, your illegal actions directing staff to give over confidential claims and handling the documents, and then calling a special board meeting using stolen documents to remove Churnus and Gates was outside of protocols. Now we have more lawsuits coming. The taxpayers are not going to foot the bill for the illegal actions and working outside of your scope as a board member. We demand of P Y L U S D, if sued, Marilyn Anderson and Carrie Buck pay their own attorney fees. How many consultants and employees have to complain and file against Marilyn Anderson complaining of antisemitism and racism? We have the first Jewish superintendent and first black deputy superintendent, and the decision of the board majority was to remove them? Marilyn, how many times have you asked Dr. Churnus if he was Jewish in violation of employment law? The only reason--
Thank you.
Hi, Ben Stubbs, P Y L parent, and good afternoon, members of the board, community, interim superintendent, Dr. Gray. Friends and family, if you expect transparency and integrity from President Anderson, I believe you won't find it. This is already the second closed session meeting that's been called at 3:30 PM, when most parents are still at work and unaware. Take, for example, the emergency meeting on December 19th, where she followed Apple President Lynda Mannion's orders to place our superintendent and assistant superintendent on administrative leave. Then at 11:00 AM on the eve of Christmas Eve, she sent an email to every parent in the district about Dr. Churnus being put on administrative leave, tarnishing his reputation in the eyes of the community. These actions happened swiftly under trustee Anderson's leadership too quickly, in my opinion. Friends and family, I'm just a dad, don't take my word for it. As constituents, you have the right to ask President Anderson why she's targeting Dr. Churnus, Dr. Gates, Dr. Fisher, and OCS. Bring back Dr. Churnus.
Thank you. Mrs. Bradowski, is this your card?
I've always been an advocate, especially for those who can't advocate for themselves. Most of you know that I'm a proud parent of Jackson, and he is on the brink of graduating from high school this year, and as we're approaching this time, it's had me reflect upon where we've come from. And it wasn't until I met the leader of this charter school six years ago that hope turned into action. It was in this school that I finally found someone who could transform not just Jackson's learning experience, but the cultures, the culture for all students. Today, I'm honored to serve as a member of the Advisory Council at OCSCS, where I have the privilege of witnessing a vision brought to life. This vision is not just an idea, it's lived in reality, driven by a dedicated staff committed to every student's success. The revisions proposed are not just, are not just reasonable, they are essential. They're about removing barriers to ensure that every child has the opportunity to excel. There are no legal obstacles standing in the way of these changes, only the potential for progress. So, I ask you, will you stand as a barrier to this growth, or will you be the catalyst that helps propel our learners to the school floor--
Thank you very much.
--and bring back Churnus?
Thank you. Next four, Paul Vanderlei, Gary Brianna Trump, and Connor Borg.
My wife and I moved here because we learned about the quality of the schools within the P Y L U S D, and our boys were rewarded with the rich experience at Sierra Vista. Fast forward to sixth grade, parent-teacher conference, and as we're discussing our boys' education with their teacher, begin to realize that the structure of her classroom means that our boys are going to receive the minimum education required for them to reach the common core baseline standards. So, when I hear Dr. Fisher share a vision of building a learning culture of what's next, I'm intrigued. When I hear that students who achieve mastery expectations are given additional assignments or activities to further the mastery of a subject, and that students who are struggling with the subject are offered tutoring sessions to tackle the subject from a different angle, and then should a student not achieve mastery at major testing benchmarks, they're assigned a mini elective in that subject so that no child is left behind, while I set aside my preconceived notions about charter schools and assign my boys up. Now, this is a discussion. If this school board is capable of effectively governing a school who's actively shifting its learning culture to one of what's next, while at the same time governing the myriad of schools under its purview--
Thank you very much for your time.
--who are maintaining the culture of reaching common core standards.
Thank you. Gary?
My wife and I are proud grandparents of seven grandchildren. One, a recent graduate from Valencia. One will be graduating this year from Eldorado, which thankfully has a new principal. One attends OCSCS, and another will soon be entering OCSCS. S C, or C S. Additionally, I have two grandchildren attending Brea High, with another one about to enter kindergarten at P Y L. I want to emphasize the need to restore our district's focus on uplifting and supporting our goals. My grandchildren at OCSCS is not only excelling academically, but also thriving in athletics and social relationships. The narrative that OCSCS is an experiment or has failed is simply untrue. The school's leadership is transparent, listens to people's feedback, and makes real-time adjustments to benefit students. There's a clear focus on safety and positive school culture--
Thank you. Brianna?
My name is Brianna Trump. I'm a third generation here at this district. My son is a student at OCSCS. I am also the PTA president at OCSCS. Let's put our differences aside tonight and focus on what matters the most, which is the children. I spend a lot of time there, and I haven't seen any of you at the campus except Tricia. Tricia, I know you see what I see at OCSCS, and I hope and pray that you give these kids a chance.
He's a little nervous.
Hello, my name is Connor Borg. I am seventh grade at OCSCS. This year has been the best year of all my school years. I love the mini electives, I love my teachers, I love the grading system, and I love my school. Please do not take OCSCS away from me and the students of OCSCS. I want to thank Mrs. Fisher, my principal, for the wonderful year she has given me and all the students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connor. Next four, Marissa Mallory, Andy Falco, Joshua Lane, and Stephanie Lee.
I no longer have any students in P Y L schools. After witnessing his sister's high school experiences, our son chose to go to a private high school where he is thriving. This one child leaving P Y L for four years cost the district over $50,000. There are currently 14 students in grades K through 12 living on my block. Only three attend P Y L schools. And annually, that costs this district over $140,000, or $1.8 million, over the course of those students' K-12 years. Right now is when the open enrollment windows in our neighboring districts are opening. Those with charter schools within their limits support those charters and welcoming students from P Y L, transitioning them to their traditional public schools once they complete their charter school education. In other words, they won't return to P Y L schools. Private schools are hosting their open houses, and early acceptance letters have already gone out for 2025, 2026 school year. The actions of this board majority have threatened the financial well-being of this school district and harmed the students in its schools. P Y L has a model, notice needed nurtured. It wasn't until the reign of President Anderson that I realized that this motto refers to the teachers' union, not to the students that they are to teach.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to dispense with my prepared comment, because when I found out that Tricia Quintero was there for three hours at OCSCS, I'm going to have the faith that she saw the greatness of that school and saw how an amazing principle, Dr. Fisher, was able to put together a program that has changed children's lives. I had the good opportunity with a bunch of friends yesterday to meet with at least 100 parents who have children that go to OCSCS, and it was all the same. Everybody talked about how amazing it was, how it changed their children's lives, and how many of them had simply put their kids in that school because of the planned education that there was going to get there. And so, I'm going to have faith that Tricia Quintero saw what we see, and will do the right thing and vote for everything that they need to continue to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua Lane?
The difference between a good school and a great school is the buy-in from its educators and the people that are involved in the future of our kids. The curriculum that is provided at OCSCS is unique. My child specifically has went from a C student to an A B student, and it's just been one semester. She comes home and talks about the counselors, the teachers, and how they help her, unlike in the past. Most importantly, a seventh grader, my daughter, wants to go to college now. She talks to us about it. She reached out to her family to go on tours to Cal State Fullerton and UCLA, where they attend, and where you want to hold her back from going. You all should be ashamed of yourself for even fighting this. A seventh grader that went from a C student to wanting to go to college and wants to develop and impact the future is very unique. No C student wants that and goes from that in just a couple of months. The future is decided at OCSCS by you guys, and you choose which way my daughter gets to go in life and the impact that she gets to have on the community.
Thank you.
I received this from a credentialed staff member at OCSCS, and I'm reading it for them because they're in fear of being retaliated. Our community collaboration as a group needs to improve. During the last three board meetings, some speakers presented misinformation and myths in regards to OCSCS. To the best of our knowledge, these presenters have not visited OCSCS, nor had discussions with staff and teachers. When a speaker presented information in contrast to others' opinions, both sides of the aisle engaged in disrespectful behavior by heckling. This is not conducive of a community that is open to the perspective of others. We need to create a decorum open to opinions to provide solutions and options for our students.
Thank you. Okay, the next four. Michelle Totweiler, Phil Seitz, April--
Sorry.
Thank you. Linda Combe.
Hello, I'm an education specialist at OCSCS. I spent 23 years at Bernardo Yorba Middle School, and I've been an instructional aide, a student teacher in the district. I'm a resident and a proud member of the community, and I love Placentia Yorba Linda. Over the years, we have seen so many changes in education, and we've always adapted, the district, we've always adapted to provide the best for the students. This petition before you represents just another shift and another change in how we educate. Our full inclusion model ensures students remain in general education classrooms accessing grade-level curriculum with necessary accommodations and modifications. This approach fosters belonging and helps students with, reach their full potential. I have witnessed firsthand students--
Thank you so much.
--I just, thank you.
My name is Phil Seitz, and I am the History Department Chair at OCSCS. I've been at Bernardo Yorba, now OCSCS, for 28 years. Since I began, I've heard many rumors from the beginning of this school year, for example, that we're lazy. In reality, our professional days are packed with lesson planning, creating common assessments, coordinating pacing, faculty meetings, and teaching. We dedicate ourselves to supporting sixth through eighth grader students, often working longer hours than many others without complaint. Another rumor is that we're unhappy. On the contrary, I've spoken to nearly every teacher, and the consensus is clear. We're proud of our work, we're aligned with the school's mission, and we're united. Another, that we dislike our union. Not at all. 90% of the staff belongs to a union. We've asked the union to represent our staff if we're granted autonomy. It's the union who's hesitating to represent the teachers at OCSCS. And finally, that we oppose the charter autonomy. Almost all teachers agree.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I would like to echo the feelings that we would love it if this, all the animosity would end. We are hoping to come together as a community. I'm asking for those of you on the dais, the election is over, you all have your spots, and we appreciate your service. It's not an easy spot to be in, and when you go into the back right now to discuss whatever the possible litigation is, I would ask that you do so based on the facts and the truth in the matter, and not trying to win political points with anyone, because there's some real interest, you're all really important things at stake. Couple of things I just want to point out is, when this was originally presented, there was an ed code cited 15 days necessary to have things submitted before review, and this pertains specifically to establishment and renewal of petitions. And according to the California Fifth Appellate Court, today's First Art Charter versus Inglewood School District, there's separate-- School District, there are separate procedures and criteria for material revisions. They are not the same.
Thank you very much.
I'm Linda Cohn, I'm honored to speak for Tiffany Gonzalez. These are her words. My oldest daughter attends O C S C S, and I have two more children that are set to attend as well. Therefore, I have a legitimate interest in this school. Our experience at O C S C S has been thus far outstanding. Not only are there incredible information and transparency for parents, there's open communication, my questions are addressed immediately. Additionally, my daughter has already been building in the innovation lab, and she gives a detailed description. This is mind-blowing for my 13-year-old with zero experience or knowledge of anything before this September. The way the program challenges kids to think and solve problems is fantastic, applicable to getting things done in a real job in the real world while there's ambiguity and undefined realms. This is especially applicable for the job market today. Both my husband and I have worked in the tech industry in San Francisco and have been bleeding-edge companies so that we are speaking with-
Thank you very much.
-content and experience.
Thank you very much.
Do the right thing.
Thank you very much. Next four speakers, Judy Dejordan, Moises Ononso, Billy Veda, and Leslie Alexander.
Tristi Anderson, did you say me? I'm first.
Yes, you're first. Thanks, Judy.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yes, I toured the charter school on January 7th, I believe, and Beth Fisher gave me the tour. I also met with the teachers because it was, the wind was blowing so hard that the kids didn't have recess, and I did meet with, thank you, sir. And he told me that the teachers actually teach 250 minutes more than your non-charter schools. Also, they are teaching, part of the curriculum is teaching common core, I mean, teaching math the way that I was taught. Common core is a disaster. Also, I left there thinking that these students are going to be able to find their passion. And also, I saw a young man, a student, giving a big presentation, and I thought, whoa, at that age, that is really impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, staff. I really don't have a dog in the fight. My son's, this is his last year at the school, but I got to tell you, the coming from another school system, the transformation. My son came, went from being a D student and C student to being on the honor rose, and that's because of Dr. Beth and the staff at this school. They really care about the students. And I got to ask you, I've never seen, coming from another school district myself back east, I've never seen a school like this to provide such quality and such education to the students. It's amazing. And not affording the other kids this opportunity would really be a crime. I mean, to hear all this bickering and fighting going back and forth, one has to wonder, who are the real adults in the room? Seems like it's the kids. It's really a shame. Don't we all at all, as parents, to want the best education for our children? As a parent, I'll go to any length to make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'd like to, first of all, thank you all for, you know, working so hard for the children, because that's our future. And I'm a 15-day-old grandfather, and I was just at a funeral burying a grandmother. And I came, I have nothing really to say, except my daughter loves school. She gets up early, she wants to go to school, she loves her principal, and she sees her friends also love school. And, you know, I come home and I see her, like, working on school stuff, and I think, it shocks me, because I have two other kids that went to your school district, they've graduated, and my son didn't do very well in school, and he always had problems. He was always, you know, bullied. And it wasn't this school, but, you know, this one seems to be really, really nice, and I don't want this, my last child, to experience what they experienced.
Thank you very much.
My name is Leslie Alexander. I'm the parent of two P Y L grads and a retired teacher from Yorba Linda Middle School. I would like to begin by thanking Mrs. Anderson for her patience and for her leadership as president of our school board in restoring this board to duties of oversight and accountability. Your attentiveness and your civility are appreciated. I would like to submit that O C S C S remain a district charter under the oversight of the P Y L U S D board. The rushed application for the conversion is incomplete and missing several components which are required. This application is not the result of careful planning or thoughtful research that would best serve the students of that school. This is a new school, and there are many pieces that still need refining, ranging from developing a master schedule that is workable from the first day of school to strategies to maintain enrollment. These processes will require supervision, monitoring, and scrutiny. I believe this charter requires more accountability and oversight, not less. Therefore, it should remain a district charter under the guidance-
Thank you very much.
-of the P Y board.
Thank you. The next four, Maria Stubbs, Karen, Pam, and Danell.
Good afternoon, trustees, interim superintendent Gray, staff and community. Maria Lupita Stubbs, parent in P Y L U S D. Last November, at the Orange County School of Computer Science Kernekopia event, my young children explored the innovation labs, met their future principal Dr. Fisher and teachers, and brought home 3D-printed items created by the students. My oldest is excited about attending next year, and my youngest just loved it all. In contrast to my children's excitement over O C S C S, I am reminded that President Marilyn Anderson voted no on funding the innovation lab at the May 7, 2024 board meeting. She also voted no on purchasing Singapore math textbooks and other materials for O C S students. However, Anderson voted in favor of rehiring a law firm that includes attorney Suki, who creates a common enemy out of charter schools. Bring back Dr. Churness, bring back Dr. Gates, and stop the attack on O C S C S and our children.
Thank you.
Hi.
Your legacy is one of boasting about confidential H R matters, yet you offer no timelines for the return of administrators who pose no threat, Marilyn. Return them now. Your legacy includes Christmas coup and hostile Hanukkah. No one is fooled. You have it out for Dr. Churness, and the other admins are just collateral damage. Marilyn, you can't look at me? The public sees how the board majority manipulates perception with fake legal claims. Meanwhile, students suffer. Set aside your pride and vindictive agenda, bring back our superintendent, let the investigations follow the proper channels. I haven't heard anyone here speak in opposition of O C S, short of the one lady that wants it done differently. This community clearly overwhelmingly supports it, and so any actions that you take to destroy it will only be further evidence of your personal agenda that goes against what the community, parents, students, and teachers at that school clearly want.
Thank you.
Bring back Dr. Churness.
Thank you.
I admit, I have no idea what the vote is in closed session. I thought 15 days meant you were going to come to open session and talk about a material revision, so I actually, I don't know what's going on here, and I think a lot of community members have no idea what's going on. I just came to suggest, you've got, the district has a communication and a marketing and therefore a credibility problem. It seems like one side will be loved by that particular side that voted for them, and then the other side will be loved by the people who voted for them, and so we still have a split community, which is not good. I was just going to suggest that you vote in a, have a study session, like we did with the facility fees three years ago. We learned a lot of stuff in that study session. We learned that a lot of your executive staff lied to the board members. So I think having a vote, having a discussion, an open session, a study session, we can hear both sides, pros and cons, would be best so that everyone can hear in the open what's happening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Danell, I have two kids in this district, and I'm about to make some enemies. I want to preface this by saying that my genuine desire is that this charter school is successful and a benefit to this school district. Unfortunately, O C S C S has not currently had a track record of transparency, honesty, or quality education. What we have seen is a principal who is willing to muddy the waters of her focus and sight with distractions and participate in what is best questionable financial activities. Dr. Fisher has repeatedly demonstrated a willingness to address the community outside of the board through videos, petitions, letters of misinformation, and even influencing parents to or not to attend board meetings. Most of all of this has been documented to the school board in previous complaints. And building a charter school board that negates even a single board member shows a continued aggression and lack of willingness to work with or support the board. This needs to stop being ignored. Dr. Fisher has encouraged a community of discontent and created almost a culture war to avoid transparency and answering-
Thank you very much.
...difficult questions. Good luck.
Thank you. The last two, Julie Klinkenberg and Paula Powers.
Julie Klinkenberg, proud of three P Y L graduates, so I've been an active participant long before these culture wars. I'm a concerned citizen and a hard-working taxpayer. Happy New Year, new board of trustees. We have a fresh start, fresh eyes on the approval of a revised charter petition that was hastily made last December. Just wanted to remind the public that on December 12, 2023, the board of trustees unanimously voted to approve the conversion of Bernardo Yorba to a district-affiliated charter school, and I think we should stand with that decision. Keep it under the watchful eye of an informed board of trustees who continues to ask good questions to support all learners, use the funding and spaces properly and appropriately. Innovation is good, it's great, but rushing decisions is not. Look at the debacle of U S I. Hopefully, this current team, that's you guys, can quit pulling audibles in game day decisions. Please refer to a playbook which includes being transparent, getting solid answers to move forward, and hold each other accountable and fiscally responsible when approving material revisions. We stakeholders want to ensure our students are getting a solid public school education.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Paula Powers. O C S C S has not even been open for a year yet. Why are we already having to revise the charter before it has had a chance to succeed? It is not the right time to make this monumental decision to go independent with so many unknowns. Half the people in this room are under the misconception that you want to close the charter. The board must abide by the contract they made to our community at the start of O C S C S. It should remain a P Y L school under the supervision of the board as it was intended to do. That was the promise made to us, and I ask that you keep it.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of closed session.
I just had, I had a couple of questions before we go back to closed session, if that's okay.
We have a-
It's a couple regarding closed session before we go back.
Are you asking questions about the agenda?
I'm asking questions, yes, about the agenda for closed session, before we go into the back.
If you want to ask your question, I can let you know whether-
Okay. So we have under one of, I think it's probably under 3.2, there is a confidential claim that was filed on December 18, and it's going to come before the board in closed session. However, you have already hired an investigator for this claim, even though the board has given no direction for the claim, and we haven't even seen the claim as a board, we haven't directed anything, we haven't been directed about the claim, but you've hired an investigator for the claim. And so that is actually, where were you given direction and who gave you the claim?
I'll be providing updates about the investigation in closed session.
How come you're not providing this? You're working outside-
Because it's confidential attorney-client privileged communication.
So a board member may have given you a confidential claim because it wasn't the interim superintendent, and you went outside-
I did not get the claim before the night that I saw you.
So why did you hire the investigator then?
I will give you an update in closed session.
So we've admitted we've hired an investigator, and the board hasn't even seen the claim. Second, another thing is, I would like to know, I've spoken to, obviously, our own P Y L U S D charter, I've spoken to Magnolia, and I've spoken to C R L A, and none of them have any litigation against us, there's no anticipated litigation, and David Huffus says nothing is actionable until April. So if you can please explain to the community, especially when we have, on the open session agenda, we have O C S C S presenting it open, how are we able to go back there if there's no anticipated litigation? And I will say that Suki told Renee Gray that this is, this is something that she does, she puts information under confidential, or I'm sorry, anticipated litigation, to be able to get in the back and to be able to brief the board with whatever she would like to brief them with. And then further, in an email that was accidentally sent to me, I would just like to point out, what do we do with this when we have an attorney that is trying to-
So I can tell you that-
I'm not done, I'm not done.
Okay.
We have an attorney-
I'll defer to the board president to decide.
We have an attorney who is essentially trying to-
I think we need to just go to closed session.
No, I'm going to sit here because this is, we can't go into closed session.
So let's go ahead and adjourn to closed session at 4:21.
So Magnolia and C R L A will no longer, and definitely should go first in order to create a common enemy with the board, said the attorney, we're going into closed session. And we have a specific order put onto our closed session, make a common enemy with the board, and we have no anticipated litigation-
Wow.
-on the books.
And I'd like to thank everybody for their patience. We had a lot to discuss, and we were able to get to it all, so I'm very thankful for your patience being out here. I have a few things to report out. One, in closed session, the board took action to appoint Renee Gray as acting superintendent beginning, this is a continuation. A motion was made by Mr. Frazier, a second by Mrs. Blades. The board vote was three to two. Board members, Mrs. Quintero, Mrs. Blades, and Mr. Frazier voted yes, and Mrs. Anderson and Mrs. Buck voted no. A second item, in closed session, the board took action to appoint Yolanda Mendoza, Acting Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, beginning effective January 15, 2025. A motion was made by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Quintero, and the vote was five to zero. Number three, in closed session, the board took action to appoint Joan Velasco as interim Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, beginning effective January 15, 2025. A motion was made by Mrs. Blades, a second by Mrs. Quintero, and the board's vote was five to zero, and the board's vote was unanimous. Also, contracts that will be approved later in this meeting will be on display for your review outside or up here at the front desk. And that is the report out. Now, I can ask trustee Quintero if she will please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If possible, if it's okay with the rest of the board, we'd like to consider moving up our student board member so she may join us at this time. Mr. Frazier, are you okay with that?
I wasn't unmuted, am I muted now?
You're unmuted, we can hear you now.
Hey, I'm fine with it.
Are you okay with us moving that up?
Yes, I am fine with it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Gray. I think we need to do the motion first, Mrs. Gray.
Yep, before you start, let me pull it up here.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Leila Armand as a student board member for the second semester of the 2024-2025 school year.
Second.
We all do a roll call. Mrs. Blades?
Yes.
Mrs. Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Buck?
Aye.
And I am also an aye, and the vote is unanimous. Now, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Gray.
Okay. It's my pleasure to administer the oath of office to our new student board member, Leila Armand. She will serve on our Board of Education during the second semester of the 24-25 school year. So, I'm going to share a little bit about Leila. Leila grew up in our district attending Linda Vista Elementary, Yorba Linda Middle School, and now Valencia High School. As a senior, Leila dedicates much of her time to passions for basketball and computer science, very well-rounded. She is an active member of both the International Baccalaureate IB and Cambridge International Programs. Leila's senior year includes a rigorous course load of IB and AP classes such as computer science, physics, economics, math, and English. She is also deeply involved in extracurricular activities, serving as president of the Black Student Union, a member of the United Nations-founded Girls Up Club, STEM Club, and participating in varsity basketball, lacrosse, and track and field, just to name a few. After graduating, Leila will attend Northwestern University in fall 2025 on a full tuition scholarship. She plans to major in computer science, aspiring to become an AI tech specialist in Washington, DC. Wow. Awesome. You're going to do great. Leila has a very strong support system behind her, including her mom, Heba, Dad Jason, and younger brothers Dean, a freshman at Eldorado High School, and Jordan, a sixth grader at Woodsboro Elementary, as well as her grandparents, Lilian, Troy, Magda, and Ahmed. Some of them are here with us this evening, and if they'd like to stand to be recognized, that would be great. Also in attendance to show his support is Principal Chris Hurstfeld of Valencia High School. Woo-hoo, Chris. We are very pleased Leila has agreed to serve as our student board member during her senior year at Valencia. Let's give her a big round of applause. Welcome. Congratulations. So excited for you. So, now, we're going to do the oath of office, so if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Leila Armand...
I, Leila Armand.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter...
Upon which I am about to enter.
As a student board member, I am committed to...
As a student board member, I am committed to...
Providing a voice for students, including communicating effectively...
Providing a voice for students, including communicating effectively.
Regarding schools, programs...
Regarding schools, programs.
Activities and student achievement...
Activities and student achievement.
Furthermore, I will do my best...
Furthermore, I will do my best.
To ensure all representative opinions...
To...
To ensure all representative opinions...
To ensure all representative opinions.
Of the students of the Placentia-Yorba Linda Unified School District...
Of the students of the Placentia-Yorba Linda Unified School District.
Are actively sought, heard, and considered, sorry, are actively sought, heard, and considered...
Are actively sought, heard, and considered.
As I serve as a student member to the Board of Education.
As I serve as a student board member to the Board of Education.
Yay, congratulations. I'm so happy, who could be seat? Awesome.
Let the roll call show that all board members are here, as Trustee Frazier is participating via teleconference, so we'll be doing roll calls, as we stated earlier. I need to turn some time over for Mrs. Gray to talk about the amended agenda.
Okay, members of the board, it is my recommendation we poll and/or amend the following items. Poll item actions, action item 16.5, the contract as currently written does not align with our established guidelines. Amending action items 16.6, per the document provided on the dais, this item requires a correction to address a clerical error. The memo reads to include all bargaining units when not all bargaining units have agreed. And lastly, to amend consent item 21.2, human resources, which includes a classified report, per the document on the dais, this amendment reflects the removal of a name from the report. So moved.
Okay, do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a first by Mrs. Blades, a second by Mrs. Buck, to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any comments? Okay, well, we will do a roll call. Miss Leila?
Aye. Oh, sorry, forgot, you're next to me now.
You, Mrs. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am also an aye, so, motion carried by a 5-0 with one, with an aye from our student board member. Okay, so here comes the public comment announcement. Public comments are available in the foyer, cars must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. We're going to provide a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know so we know ahead of time and we can ensure we are prepared. Civility policy, education code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of a hate crime set forth in section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status. So now, we will move on to 11.1, approving of the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve December 19th, 2024, special meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Quintero. Are there any comments? Okay, we will do a roll call, and Leila, since you weren't at this meeting, you don't get to vote, sorry. Mrs. Blades?
Aye.
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 And I am also an aye, so the motion carries 5-0.
I'll make a motion that we approve December 17th, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Quintero. Any comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and take the vote. Mrs. Blades?
Aye.
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 Perfect. And I am also an aye, so the motion carries 5-0. Okay, so now, we will have our student board report by Mrs. Leila Armand.
Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, and acting superintendent, Mrs. Gray. I'm excited to be here tonight to share recent updates from our comprehensive high schools and alternate campuses. So, currently, Parkview School and Buena Vista Virtual Academy are preparing their TK-12 production of Frozen, scheduled for April 11th and 12th. These annual event fosters camaraderie and bring together the community. In February, the PTSA will host their annual Jog-a-Thon, followed by an open house in March. Students and families are eagerly anticipating these spring events. For El Camino Real High School is proud to announce that nine students have graduated so far this year. Eleven students, eleven new students join their school at the start of the semester, along with two new staff members who are teaching electives in journalism and art fundamentals. The college and career tech team is organizing a trip to Chapman University in March, providing students with valuable exposure to higher education opportunities. Eldorado High School's winter sports teams are performing strongly across various fields, courts, and mats. Boys soccer is currently first place, leading the Crestview League during a grueling schedule. Boys basketball has an impressive 18-4 overall record, showcasing their competitiveness and looking forward to taking a top spot by the end of the Freeway League play. The girls' basketball team is in second place, continuing to battle for their top spot in their league with six games to them. The Golden Hawk girls' soccer team is also making a push for the league's top position with strong performances and determined efforts as they continue to compete in one of the strongest leagues in all Orange County. Wrestling has been seen, has seen individual standout performances with two more matches left in the season, one at home in the Nest and one remaining away match. The Eldorado Varsity Cheer Squad secured first place at their prestigious UCA West Challenge competition, highlighting their exceptional skill, team spirit, and black and gold pride. Overall, Golden Hawk winter sports are excelling with notable achievements in both team and individual performances, setting a strong foundation as they get ready for CIF playoffs. Esperanza High School has preparations for the district-wide winter formal scheduled for January 25th at Wild Rivers. Their visual and performing arts programs are gearing up for second semester events, including Mean Girls the Musical by the choir and theater departments. The jazz band is submitting recordings by national, to national competitions, and arts and ceramics students are preparing for a gallery opening later this summer. Academic teams are, academic teams are also preparing for spring competitions with academic decathlon team competing in February and hosts of students attending the state leadership conference. The key parents, for George Key School, the key parent staff, student staff organization is organizing several events, including a percussive dance ensemble, assembly on January 16th and a snow play day on February 21st. February will also feature Random Acts of Kindness Week, culminating on February 14th with a parent-student activity day. Venture Academy's choir is preparing for the love concert scheduled for February at the Eldorado Performing Arts Center. This event promises an enjoyable evening showcasing the talents of students and choir director Carmen Continua. Valencia High School hosted an avid showcase today, welcoming, welcoming over 60 visitors to observe classroom, observe classroom best practices and tour morning classes. Tomorrow, future Tigers from Kramer and Valdez Middle Schools will attend the eighth-grade showcase assembly, where they'll explore band, or explain, explore programs such as esports, robotics, arts, ASB, and more. Performances by the band, orchestra, color guard, cheer team, and other groups will highlight the event. Congratulations to the ROP photography teacher and soccer coach, Cordoza, for being named Employee of the Year for North Orange County ROP. Yorba Linda, for Yorba Linda High School, their winter sports teams are experiencing great success. The Mustang Theater Company will host the comedy sports match this Friday, featuring staff members for a night of comedic improv. The Dance Company will participate in the Community Dance Festival next month, while band and guard will showcase their talents at the Arts-Apalooza event. Club Rerush will take place in early February, encouraging strong club participation. That is all.
Thank you. I don't know if they told you this was part of... I don't know if they told you this was part of the job, but we get to quiz you.
Looking forward to it.
So, what experience do you hope to gain in serving in the Placentia-Yorba Linda Unified School District as a student board member?
I'm really looking forward to continue to gain expertise in leadership, advocacy, and governance, all while amplifying the student voices of PYL. I'm really looking forward to hopefully, you know, give back to the community that has given so much to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we are to our acting superintendent's report, Mrs. Gray?
Thank you very much. Good evening again, President Anderson and trustees. Despite the changes in our district, tonight's agenda reflects that the work of the district is continuing with great momentum. Our dedicated staff have returned from the holiday break with energy and purpose, hitting the ground running. Across our campuses, there is a palpable sense of excitement, our sites are buzzing with activities, and our sports teams are giving their all in their competitions, and most importantly, our students are deeply engaged in learning. This progress is a direct result of the extraordinary efforts of our staff. They are the heart of this district, ensuring that students remain at the center of all we do. Their unwavering commitment to forging ahead and focusing on what truly matters, which is our students, has been instrumental in sustaining the work that allows our children to thrive. Here are just a few events that exemplify their dedication. Our high school academies, right now, our four comprehensive high schools are now accepting applications, and they're working very hard to get those academies started for the 25-26 school year. This includes Digital Media Arts Academy and ED Law Academy at Eldorado, the Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, Aztec Engineering and Manufacturing Academy, and Medical Sciences Academy at Esperanza, the Cambridge AICE Diploma Program, International Baccalaureate Diploma Program, and Valtech Academy at Valencia, and last but not least, the Mustang Business Academy at Yorba Linda. Our staff associated with these academies continue to work diligently to ensure academies are second to none in the country, county, or country. Application deadlines are quickly approaching, please visit pylusd.org to learn more. As far as our TK Parent Information Night, on next Monday, the 27th, we will host our annual Transitional Kindergarten and Preschool Information Night at 6:00 PM in the auditorium at Valencia High School. Families are encouraged to attend if they have children who will be turning four between September 2nd, 2020, and September 1st, 2021, or if they are considering keeping their child out of kindergarten for an additional year. Our early educational programs are excellent and designed to prepare young learners for school success, provide readiness in reading, writing, mathematics, and social development, and give young learners the gift of time to develop and grow in an appropriate educational setting. More information, again, is on our website, which was stated before. In the area of safety, we have our Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines training that is taking place currently. One of our district's highest priorities is ensuring the safety and well-being of our students, staff, and community. To that end, we are proud to highlight the recent implementation of what's called the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines, better known as CSTAG, and this training is going across the district for all of our schools. This evidence-based training equips our staff with the tools and strategies to identify, assess, and address potential threats before they escalate. By focusing on prevention, CSTAG helps foster a culture of safety, ensuring that concerns are identified early and addressed effectively. At the same time, it provides a clear framework for intervention when necessary, ensuring that we respond to incidences thoughtfully and consistently with the safety of all in mind. Officers Sean Cronin and Rick Grammar, or Grammar, presented during this training emphasize the dual importance of prevention and intervention in school safety. Their insights remind us that while it's crucial to address issues as they arise, the true strength of these guidelines lie in their proactive approach, identifying concerns before they become crises, and building trust within our school communities. This training marks just the beginning of our plans for strengthening safety protocols in our schools. As we move forward, we will continue to develop and implement additional measures and strategies to ensure our campuses remain safe, supportive environments for all. Our commitment to the safety of our students, staff, and community is unwavering, and this is the foundation for the comprehensive approach we are building together. As far as the Employee of the Year, additionally, the district recently accepted nominations for our You Are the Advantage Employee of the Year program. Each year, teachers, classified staff members, and managers may be nominated by one or more of their colleagues or supervisors... by one or more of their colleagues or supervisors for this special recognition. Nominations detail the outstanding contributions these individuals provide to the district that go above and beyond their regularly assigned duties. The nominating individuals must also describe how the candidate demonstrates the four core values of excellence, collaboration, integrity and innovation. We look forward to announcing the recipients of our Employee of the Year Award in February. So speaking of the outstanding contributions of our PYLUSD employees, I want to take a moment to recognize the incredible individuals who ensure that the work of our district is continuing seamlessly. First are our hard-working teachers, who day in and day out rise above distractions to ensure our students receive the highest quality education. Their dedication is the foundation of our success. Next, where would we be without our principals? They are the heart and soul of our district. Day in and day out, they rise to the occasion, setting aside distractions to ensure every day is meaningful for our students. Our students thrive largely due to their unwavering leadership and dedication. Equally vital are our committed support staff, our school psychologists, instructional aides, food service workers, bus drivers and countless others who work behind the scenes to make everything run smoothly. And finally, I want to shine a spotlight on our directors, sitting here in the front row, many of whom are here this evening for us. Would you please stand to be recognized? Over... Yeah, in the second row, there's some too, that's right. Over the last few weeks, your... Over the last few weeks, I can't say this strongly enough, your leadership and resilience have been extraordinary. You've stepped up in ways that no one would have anticipated, ensuring that district doesn't miss a beat. Mike, where's Mike? Mike, you've taken on leadership duties with such poise and grace. Your steadiness has been a guiding force. And Gwen and Baldwin, right over there, your proactive mindset and willingness to take on more, always asking, "What else can we do? What else can we do?", have been invaluable to everyone. Liz, your steadfast commitment and exceptional leadership of our elementary principals continue to inspire everyone around you. And Dawn, Dawn over there, your ability to manage an intricate web of contracts and responsibilities while taking on even more is nothing short of remarkable. George and Elaine, your expertise and dedication in your technical and specialized areas are essential to the district's success. And a lot of us don't understand what you do, I'm telling you. Ralph, your humor and quick response time bring levity and support when it's needed most and it's always appreciated. And Richard and Fong, your specialized skills in transportation and fiscal management are truly invaluable. The expertise you both bring to the table plays a critical role in the seamless functioning of our district and we are deeply grateful for all that you do. And last but certainly not least, there's Jeremy, who's here every time, over there. I'm sorry, yep. Whose technical expertise and unmatched technological skills make many of the previously mentioned directors' responsibilities possible. It's because of you, Jeremy, and your countless contributions are so valuable to so many, so thank you. So on behalf of everyone in the district, I thank you all for stepping up and leading during this time with courage and heart and you are an inspiration to us all and your efforts will continue to make a lasting impact. So in closing, I would just like to say, over the past week, we have all witnessed the profound impact of the devastating fires throughout Southern California. Many of our neighbors have faced unimaginable trauma, uncertainty, uncertainty. For some, like my family, this has hit very close to home. My eldest son was evacuated due to the Sunset Fire, a sobering reminder of how quickly circumstances can change. These events highlight the heightened anxiety that stems from uncertainty. While we cannot control the external factors faced by those enduring this crisis, we can take action within our district to provide clarity, stability and direction. It is our responsibility as a district to collaborate, to problem solve and work tirelessly to restore the trust and excellence that our community expects and deserves. As we move forward, let this moment serve as a call to unity. Our students are watching and they deserve nothing less than our collective commitment to their success and well-being. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Now we're moving on to the public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have, I believe, sixty-one speakers wishing to speak tonight, so each speaker will be given one minute. I'm gonna call, we ask the speakers to repeat their name when they come up to speak and we'll call for the first four speakers to come and sit in the front to be prepared so we can keep moving with our time. Our first speaker will be Elwin, I think it's Tong, or Tong, Stephanie Lee. Stephanie Lee, Madeline, Gabi... Gabriela and April Gabriela. Elwin? Is, Elwin Tobing? Tobing here, T-O-B-I-N-G, I believe? With the last two numbers of the phone number, two-nine? Stephanie Lee?
Hello. I have a unique vantage point as a parent of PYL graduates, including Bernardo Yorba. And now my granddaughter is attending a PYL school. And by the way, my name is Stephanie. I'm really puzzled by the controversy surrounding the efforts to bring our schools up to speed with technology and innovation. Why resist progress that benefits our kids? Isn't it rare for a school to voluntarily take on more work? Yet, that's what the whole staff at OCSCS is committed to doing. Their dedication to making this school the best it can be is undeniable. They have openly and clearly outlined a pathway to secure more resources for our students. So approving their request should be a really easy decision to make. I'm asking as a parent and grandparent, please set aside differences, find common ground, not common enemies. Focus on what truly matters, supporting our schools and our students' vision for a brighter future.
Madeline?
Hello and good evening. My name is Maddie and I'm a student at OCSCS. I attend After School Innovation Lab Club and it is very fun. The teacher encourages us to use our creativity and imagination to make incredible things using machines. It allows us to talk to people you usually don't talk to and collaborate. It is very exciting to make and build things using tools and machines. I'm very interested in learning how to use them. It would be sad to see that program go away. Most people do not understand why we use the mastery-based learning instead of the usual A, B, C, D, F grading system. I think that the mastery-based is better because students understand what they need to do to reach the goal instead of waiting for the next test and try to get into it. Also, it keeps students in high spirits because if you get an F on a test, you don't know how to do better and an F means fail, so you have failed. That is very negative. Whereas the mastery-based learning is you have not met the success criteria yet, you just need to build a little more. That's much more positive. This school experience makes me excited about learning because...
Thank you so much. April?
Sorry, I'm gonna take a minute. That was my one who actually likes school, so. I've spoken about the other one in the past, but I'm April Gavrilovich. Thank you again for your time, you guys, and your dedication to this. I'm speaking on behalf of a few things that I can address regarding the revision to the petition that have been confusing. Regarding the governance structure, it was mentioned that there won't be a position for a PYLUSD representative on the board and that's not true. The governance structure actually provides a position that is put in by you guys. And also, that governance structure has to, they abide by the same governing laws as a school board. Ed code, government law, all that applies. And we also have to, I say we, not me, I'm not involved, would have to provide documents to the board regularly for transparency. We recognize that this program and the things in the petition have been a tax on the district. It's evident. You guys work with thousands of students and these departments are being asked to perform needs based on the programs that are being run here, that it takes a lot. And prioritizing that across the district certainly is a lot, but we would be able to prioritize for those programs.
The next four speakers, Paul Vanderlei, Beth Fisher, David Dee and Judy Dejordon. Paul is first.
Good evening, I'm Paul Vanderlei. A computer science school that relies on Chromebook apps, an innovation lab that runs fundraising campaigns like a school band. The What's Next learning culture launched by Dr. Fisher under a differently balanced school board is gasping for air. It's this unique culture that encourages my boys' intellectual curiosity. They take an active role in requesting classes and opportunities that they know they would not have access to in other PYLUSD schools. OCSCS requires more effort, more dedication and yes, more funding than what the current school board may be capable of delivering. Can this school board effectively govern and fund a school with a learning culture of What's Next? Why simultaneously governing the myriad of schools reaching for the common core baseline standards? I would suggest that the answer to that discussion is no.
Thank you.
Well, I would love to address some of the misconceptions related to the finances. I did that with our Advisory Council and opened that to up our parent community. So, the way that I want to spend this fifty-one seconds is I would like to give acknowledgement to our incredible staff. If you are a staff member at OCSCS, please stand. When people say Beth Fisher has a lot to gain from this, I've already told you I've gained everything that I possibly can and it's right here in this room, being a part of their life. You can have a seat. If you are a student, please stand. I love you and thank you for taking an active vote. Parents, I'm not gonna have you stand because with my last eight seconds, I want to say thank you to my family and to my best friends who have uplifted our school in this process. You have sacrificed for our kids and we love you.
Thank you.
You make me follow that. Come on. Fifteen-year resident of Yorbalinda, proud parent and OCSCS student. We are first-year family in PYLUSD because our daughter loves this school. What I want to talk today about, about today though is clarifying some misunderstandings that really bother me due to the lack of knowledge of the subject. People say OCSCS is taking money away from other campuses are either disingenuous or just clueless about what's going on. Sure, OCSCS will have their own budget based on number of kids, but that is all they get. Nearly all the funds allocated to OCSCS in this model simply cover the normal day-to-day operating costs and writing paychecks that would happen regardless of the budget model. What's happening here is PYLUSD is capping how much money can come from the district to OCSCS. If OCSCS wants a new facility or a project, PYU, or whatever that is, they'll say, "That's nice. Go fund it yourself." This is doing...
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Judy Dejordan. I'm here as a grandmother. And what I want to talk about tonight is about the administrative leave. I feel that these individuals could have still been working while the investigation was, began. I think that I'm concerned about the extra workload that this is putting on the people that have to step in and do, wear two hats now. Also, I think, I mean, this is America. People are innocent until proven guilty. And I, my vote is to reinstate all and continue on with your investigation. Also, tonight, I did talk, I do support the charter school and the reason I went to see and took the tour was because of the rumors that were being spread.
Thank you. Next four speakers, Joshua Lane, Leanne Perez, Erica Perez and Phil Seitz.
I'm Joshua Lane. I spoke in front of you guys earlier today and I had a whole speech written for it. Today, I'm just here to speak from my heart right now. This little girl right here is her future, right there. This is her past, right here. And OCSCS provides that. She was able to do it and succeed without OCSCS and what it does is it makes it easier and it enlightens our kids and it brings our kids to where she is earlier. She, that girl right there, could be her boss one day. All of the kids at OCSCS deserve that opportunity. And I watch some of you smile, which means I know you guys are all human. You may not act like it sometimes when you try to take funding away or stop our kids' growth, but you all know what's right to do. And this little girl's future and my daughter over there and every single one of the kids at OCSCS deserve what we're asking for. And to take that away from them or not give it to them, you all should be the ones who are not in office anymore.
Thank you.
My name is Ali Perez. I'm an eighth grade DLA student at OCSCS. I'm here tonight to tell you about positive impacts I've seen since becoming a charter school. In this model of learning, I'm able to have a voice and I can say what I think about changes in my school and give feedback to my principal. I'm doing much but in my class and I have support from not only my teachers, but my counselors at Avenon Campus. I'm having a hard time seeing why my school gets so much hate because we are different than other middle schools. My school is not only a great place to learn, but a place where I'm able to collaborate with my fellow peers in class and also foster friendships outside of class. Thank you.
That was my girl right there. My name is Erica Perez and I currently serve on the OCSCS Advisory Council. I am a parent of, I'm a PTA member and I'm also a parent of that DLA student. I also have a second one that's in fourth grade at Glenview. As OCSCS brings forward this petition, they are doing so to ensure that they have the funds that they would not otherwise have so that they can maintain and grow their programs. Having been part of the DLA program for nine years, we have seen the underfunding, lack of care, lack of follow-through from this district office. As, as our students are preparing to promote to high school, there are currently no plans in place for their high school studies. My fear is that if OCS is not given the opportunity to have the oversight in partnership with the PYLUSD authorizing board, then this charter will end up like the Spanish DLA program, the exotic peck that everyone wanted, but no one is taking care of. It seems as though OCSCS is falling into the same trend. At the same time, it's a good idea to ensure that people...
Thank you.
My name is Phil Seitz. I am the History Department Chair at OCSCS. I am proud to be one of the first and original staff members to convert BYMS to OCSCS. We chose to charter our school to implement teacher clarity, a proven approach to improving student learning. In our classrooms, every lesson has clear goals with specified skills to practice and students understand the purpose behind what they're learning. Our instruction targets both corrective instruction, when students need further support in their learning, and enrichment when students are excelling. Every student has a chance to grow in their learning and mastery of skills. This is all a very painstaking task. I am proud of our innovative teaching methods. This charter revision is essential to us continuing our work. Without continued financial support and increasing support as we grow, this will not work. Without charter revision, we cannot be confident that this will work next year.
The next four speakers, Chris- Yep. Jessa Conseco, Sarah Gonzalez, and Steve Barton. Yep, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, esteemed colleagues, and honored guests. My name is Chris Parlopiano and I'm an engineer and a teacher at the OCSCS Innovation Lab. Our world is evolving rapidly, and education really should evolve with it. At OCSCS, we are committed to preparing students for the future that is far more complex and technological than we can even imagine. Throughout history, leaders with vision have faced doubt and skepticism, but perseverance has always been key. The progress we've made at OCSCS has already transformed students' lives and sparked imaginations. I've seen it firsthand. Let's not cut short these benefits. Please approve the OCSCS charter petition so we can continue providing our students with the tools and opportunities they need to grow and succeed in an ever-changing world. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jess, a parent of the district, PTA member, room parent, and a proud campus supervisor at OCSCS. And I'm here representing my incredible security team. The concern some have had was the number of supervisors we have, and our school would like, I would like to address that concern. I don't think anyone should put a price on the security of their child. Our job is to make sure the students are not only safe, but also thriving. Each of us have a zone in every area of that school, in radio communication with one another and the office, as we are there to work as a team, support and protect. What comes with our role is not only being watchful, but also being there for the students to confide in. As I walk through our campus every single day and greet the students and staff, I just love the uplifting atmosphere and energy from each and every staff member, and I am so proud to work at OCSCS and support the students, staff, and our principal, Dr. Beth Fisher.
I'd like to start off by thanking trustee Frazier for spending his evening here with us. My friend Bailey let me know that it was his birthday today. I can think of many other ways than spending a birthday here, so thank you for that, Mr. Frazier. My name is Sarah Gonzalez, I am the community liaison over at the Orange County School of Computer Sciences. I'm not sure people have an understanding of what we are asking with this petition revision, so I will be happy to share with you. We do understand our school will stay the same if it is denied, however, we put in the revision because we want to enhance our students' experiences. So, OCSCS has a hard time understanding why this is even an issue. As a PYL school, we want to make it better and this will allow us to grow the school exponentially and not create more barriers for the incredible teachers who dedicate their time to change lives. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Vartanian. Hi, my name is Steve Vartanian, I'm a proud parent of two boys in the school system. I attended Morse, Kramer, and Valencia. Go Leila, go Tigers. Currently, I volunteer at OCSCS and am the parent advisory, also doing volunteer sometimes in the school. I've observed that Dr. Fisher has created, in a very short period of time with her staff, an amazing place. I proudly served as a volunteer, and I did so when the board unanimously picked OCSCS to be the charter school. I eagerly re-volunteered at the school. So, Dr. Fisher is passionate, effective, and uber-focused to create the best possible charter school in a short period of time. Her staff and her have done that. I kindly ask that you create a governance that allows for best possible funding options for the school, thereby benefiting the students. If you'd like to ask me any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Okay, next four. Noah Althritis, James Tweet, Aliq Madanian, Zachary Ham. Noah?
Hello, my name is Noah Bolzais and I am a teacher at the Orange County School of Computer Science. I'm incredibly grateful to work alongside Dr. Beth Fisher and our administrative team. There are a few things that make OCSCS unique, and tonight I just wanted to discuss one of those aspects, which is our professional workdays. Every week, departments are provided with a designated day to plan, create, and assess student work. This is all thanks to our learning facilitators who lead engaging lessons with our students on our designated days. Because of this opportunity, course-like teachers can collaborate so that on any given day, if you walk through our halls, especially our English classrooms, you would see the same units, the same lessons, and even the same strategies taught, so that every student is given a high level of learning, no matter who their teacher is. Again, this is just one important aspect of what makes our school unique, and I look forward to what we can accomplish with our new charter revision and the ability to apply for grants.
Good evening, my name is James Tweet. I'm a history and language arts teacher at OCSCS. I'm so glad to be here with you this evening, and I'm also lucky to be here with a collection of colleagues, students, superiors, and community members, as I express my support for the charter revision at OCSCS and the work that we are doing. While it may be different, I truly see the impact that it is making. If you go here, if you come see us, I'm telling you, I'm there every day. I'm one student that's, yes, very lucky to do so, and there's a culture forming there. And I'm so unique that I get to work with students of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade levels, and it's something special to go there and see this thing evolving. There is a culture forming there, and I know that there are opinions, we all know that, but we all also know that there is work to do, more work to do. And you are welcome in my classroom anytime if you would like to see these benefits and the work that we are doing. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Aliq Madanian, and I've been a proud history teacher here in PYL for the past five years. This year, I've also had the privilege of being mentor for new teachers through our induction program, where we focus on excellence, growth, and using data to drive meaningful change. Tonight, I'm here to urge you to approve this school's charter revision petition. The OCSCS is a school that brings our district's core values to life, especially innovation. It's a place where teaching isn't bound by tradition, but inspired by creativity and grounded in research-based practices. As someone who recently completed a graduate program at San Diego State focused on best practices in education, I see how this school is taking research and putting it into action in ways that engage and inspire both students and teachers. This is exactly what we want for all of our schools, a commitment to excellence, growth, and forward-thinking education. I urge you to listen to the voices of those who are directly connected to OCSCS and support the continuation of this incredible school. It is clear, supporting this school means supporting what's best for our students. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zachary Hallam and I'm currently an Innovation Lab teacher at OCSCS. As one of the original staff who helped convert BYMS into OCSCS, I've been part of making the vision of our school happen. I believe in creating a school where teaching methods weren't bound by tradition, but inspires students to think outside the box to create something new. We, as an Innovation Lab team, are dedicated to bringing the highest quality of education to students in our district. I have poured my blood, sweat, and tears into making this school one of the gems of PYLUSD. Supporting this petition ensures that the work that not only myself, but also my colleagues have devoted will not go to waste. I know this plea could fall on deaf ears, but please consider that the teachers at OCSCS have chosen this non-traditional way of teaching because our conviction is that the structure of this school is what will bring the most success to our students. Thank you.
Alexis Charn, Wayne J., Emily Pandy, Addison.
Hello, my name is Alexi Charlie Chorn, and I've been teaching for 11 years, but this is my first year at OCSCS. I left a secure position, a place where I had permanent status, because I believe in the power of creating a truly exceptional learning environment. I saw a need for stability, for consistent support systems that empower both students and educators. I saw a need for opportunities, for innovative programs, for access to resources that ignite curiosity and unlock unlimited potential. This isn't just a job for me, it's a mission. I'm here to help build that dream, to cultivate a school where every student feels valued, challenged, and supported. I want to see us not just maintain this vision, but watch it flourish, grow, and inspire generations to come. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Wayne. I am a PYL parent, as well as a future OCSCS parent, and I'd also like to say I am a product of charter schools. When I was younger, throughout high school, I was actually at a charter school for three years, and it definitely opened up my eyes to a different learning experience than traditional high schools would be. So, I'll be the first to admit, business is my background, not education, but within business, we know that pivoting is something that is critical to a business. I think that what's going on right now with OCSCS is what's considered a pivot. We understand that funding is not where it could or should be, given the place of the district. So, giving them the opportunity to be more self-funded and be able to fund programs that would benefit the students directly is something that I think is critical. Another thing that I want to make sure that I point out for clarity is the misinformation that I continue to see. I know people have highlighted that throughout their speeches, but it takes two seconds to become informed.
Thank you.
Okay, hello, my name is Emily Pandy, and I will be speaking on behalf of a teacher at OCSCS who couldn't be here tonight, although I strongly believe with everything they said. They said, "I have worked at several districts, four in particular, and seven different schools during my career, and none have been as amazing as OCSCS. All the districts I have worked for preach the importance of research-based education, but none of the districts I have worked for have implemented research-based education to the level in which OCSCS has committed. The dedication to culture and fostering the feeling of belonging has been incomparable. I am excited to go to work. I feel as though I am at my best and therefore can give my best to my colleagues and students." And I can also attest, along with all of the rest of our staff, how much we love our campus, how much we love our principal and our admin, and with the approval of the revision, I know that we will be able to do even greater things next year. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Addison Floriano, and I'm a seventh-grade student at OCSCS. I'm here today to support my school and principal and ask that you think about us when you vote tonight. I love my school and teachers and the programs that my school comes with and helped me prepare for high school and college. My favorite things about school are the new Innovation Lab, mini electives, and teachers. I love going to school every day and I have overcome so much in the few months of going here. I have more confidence than I thought I would have, and that helps me even today, standing up here talking to you. Thank you for letting me speak about my school, and please think about us when you vote tonight.
Thank you. The next four. James Goodwin, Kimmy May, Dawn Oheah, is that four? And William McKay.
Hello, good evening, members of the board. I'm a resident of Yorba Linda, an alum of Bernardo Yorba, and the dean of students at OCSCS. I stand before you today to request your approval for a revision to our charter petition, specifically regarding autonomous spending. This revision is essential for us to access much-needed grants which will directly benefit our students and enhance our educational programs. As a school focused on computer science, having the flexibility to use these funds for resources such as software, hardware, and advanced learning tools is critical. These grants will allow us to expand our curriculum, giving our students the opportunity to engage with cutting-edge technology and develop the skills necessary for success in the 21st century workforce. We've already seen significant growth in our students' abilities, and this additional funding will help us maintain and accelerate that progress. Our learning model thrives on innovation and hands-on experience, and with your support, we can continue to provide our students with the best possible education in computer science. This is a critical time in the life of our school. This approval of this revision will not only-
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kimmy. It seems to me that Marilyn and Carrie are colluding to get Dr. Chernus and other staff out in order to cover up their illegal doings, to hiring a new attorney who's costing us double, as we already have an attorney, but now the two of you need to go out and find one that's not privy to what you guys are doing. Todd Robbins and Sukie already don't have a good reputation in our community, and hopefully they're smart enough to not risk their careers to save the two of you. You say you want fiscal transparency, yet we have seven administrators on indefinite leave to the tune of over $5,000 a day. They can't be present while you guys attempt to strong-arm the rest of the administrators and cover up the mess that you've created. Our district can't run efficiently, there's nobody doing these jobs of these seven administrators. Audits, filings, paperwork, phone calls aren't being returned to me, nothing's being done with these tasks. Renee Gray might be in on this as well, who knows? Our district's fallen so much in the last month since you've become president, Marilyn. You're an embarrassment to our district. You're so hell-bent on covering up all these messes-
Thank you very much.
-that you don't look up-
Good evening, my name is Dawn Oheah. First, I stand before you as a PYL graduate myself, knowing that I would have excelled so much more in school under the mastery-based grading and far-reaching opportunities of OCSCS. I also stand before you as an OCSCS teacher who has seen firsthand the success students are having as they shift from valuing learning through points and letters that just live on a piece of paper to actual skills that they can define and use across content areas. I believe we are truly changing lives, and I also left a permanent position because I saw the good that we could do with this program. The work we are doing is not easy. It takes so much behind the scenes, and having an autonomous budget structure would allow us to continue our professional workday, which leads to all students receiving instruction that draws on the strengths of all teachers from that department. That's an amazing thing to offer students. Lastly, and truly most importantly to me, I stand before you as a mother of a young daughter, and like was spoken there, I know she's going to change the world someday, and in approving this revision, you have the chance to open doors and empower kids like her.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for your time. My name is William McKay and I'm a first-year history teacher at OCSCS. One of the reasons I was excited to join the OCSCS team this year is because Dr. Fisher has a school that's based in student-centered, research-based practices. These approaches have created a system that fosters student growth for both high achievers and students who are still developing their skills. Our school is very highly collaborative. I have the ability to meet with other members of my department, make common assessments, make common learning goals, and create scaffolds for students with various learning needs. The result of these things are positive comments we've continued to hear from the community for months now. However, to continue growing and offering this innovative approach, it's crucial that we transition to an autonomous charter structure. No one understands the needs of the OCSCS students better than the staff here, and an autonomous structure will allow us to meet the needs of those students. This change will also provide us with greater control over our resources, allowing us to continue to develop the kind of student-centered, research-backed practices that set our school apart in the community. If you want to do what's best for students, that's the way to go. Thank you.
Next four speakers, Jess Petaglia, Ben Stubbs, Amanda Givens, and Steve Safka.
My name is Jess Petaglia and I'm a lifelong resident of Yorba Linda, former PYLUSD student and father of three currently enrolled in the district. My wife and I have two elementary-school-aged daughters at Travis, and our youngest is, youngest daughter's in the special ed program at Fairmont. Between us two parents, we're actively involved in PTA at both schools, and we collectively serve on three parent advisory boards. OCSCS has been a welcome addition to the community, and as a parent of younger children, this has given me and my wife something very serious to think about for our daughters. Mrs. Buck, I've spoken with you about my daughter and you graciously shared your family's background in special education. Mrs. Gray, you've served as a director of special education, and as a parent, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your- you from the bottom of my heart for your advocacy for special ed students and all students. As we sit in our home, our crystal ball is broken. We do not know what our daughter will need and when she will need it. However, with the attention to detail and immersion program for special ed students at OCSCS, it would be phenomenal for it to be an option for us and for our daughter when it comes time. Please be considerate of the charter revision. Thank you so much.
Good evening, board, staff, and community. Ben Stubbs, PyLUSD parent. On the day before Christmas Eve at 11:00 a.m., Prentice Anderson emailed every parent in the district announcing Dr. Alex Chernus had been placed on administrative leave. This tarnished his reputation and created an aura of scandal around an excellent superintendent. The email stated, quote, "We understand this decision may arise questions and concerns," end quote. I believe Anderson's intent was clear, to sow doubt about Dr. Chernus without first conducting an investigation, which has still not commenced. OCSCS families should also remember that Anderson's voting record, on May 7, 2024, she voted no on funding the Innovation Labs, a project designed to foster creativity and academic growth. She also voted no on purchasing Singapore math textbooks and other essential materials for OCSCS students. Anderson's decisions reflect a troubling pattern of opposing initiatives that directly benefit students in the community, and most important, our family and our children. Thank you.
I am the proud assistant principal at OCSCS. I am a resident of Yorba Linda, and better yet, a future OCSCS parent. My husband and I specifically moved to Yorba Linda to raise our children because of the wonderful schools. Prior to my role at OCSCS, I worked as a math teacher and a director of the UC Irvine Math Project, where we trained math teachers in grades TK through 12 throughout Southern California. I left this dream job to specifically work in my community. I've seen a lot of teachers at a lot of different schools over my past 15 years in education, and I've never seen a school where all teachers are on the same page at once. At OCSCS, all teachers love working here, and they hold all students accountable with clear learning intentions and success criteria. This is teacher clarity at its finest. It's truly beautiful to watch every day. We need this autonomous funding to be able to access grants that we could no longer otherwise access to continue to build these great programs that everyone's speaking of.
My name is Steve Safka, and I'm a taxpayer, not merely a guest here. Mrs. Anderson, you ran for reelection under this banner, "Save Our Schools." Exactly what were you intending to save us from? Was it an increase in district enrollment? Was it improving test scores? Or was it simply the creation of OCSCS and the maintenance of it? Perhaps the most innovative school this district has ever experienced, staffed by the finest education professionals you'll find either here or in any other district around. You were elected to be here for the kids, but let's be honest, the chaos you've rained down on this district, including this school, shows how you do not care about them at all, and you're failing them, their families, and this entire community. You're far too busy doing nothing but being the intellectually-challenged puppet pushing the agenda of your union boss puppeteers. We're fed up, and our kids are paying the price for your corrupt and incompetent arrogance. If you really want to save our schools, stop insulting us by pretending you care, and resign this evening. Thank you for your time.
Next four speakers. Donovan, Nick, Sam Mueller, and Diane Hansen.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I thought Mrs. Gray made a poignant comment when she said, "Let's seek unity," and I think we should do that here and approve this revision to the charter. Because my daughter goes to that school every day, super excited, and the only person with more enthusiasm is this lady right here, Dr. Fisher, and she's busted her buns to turn this school from something it wasn't to something that it is, and it's got more work to do. Take the shackles off of this woman, let her get the money she needs. You're going to get a percentage of it anyway when they pay you for the administration, so you're getting money for free. Give her the freedom to grow that school and finish what she started. All she's asking to do is to let her work harder to provide more for these kids and these students and in the community. Thank you so much for your time.
My name is Nick, and I'm here to read for a teacher for OCSCS. For those of you who have not visited OCSCS, one of the most positive and student-geared methods is the adoption of the UDL, Universal Design Learning Framework. At OCSCS, you have new and veteran teachers that organize and implement a UDL curriculum with tools and strategies that benefit student learners. With this type of framework, no student has to leave the classroom to access this curriculum. These tools are provided throughout the learning process to improve engagement, remove barriers to learning. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sam Mueller. As a former student of BYMS, I'm here today to champion the students who may not have a voice in this room. I know the value of a supportive school environment, and now, as someone responsible for supporting the next generation, I'm deeply invested in their success. It's perplexing that efforts of bringing our schools up to speed with technology and innovation are met with resistance. OCSCS isn't just asking for more, they're committed to doing more, with 100% of their staff dedicated to this mission. Their clear pathway to securing additional resources for our students deserves our full support. I know that when I was a student, I would have loved the opportunity to attend OCSCS. Let's set aside our differences and prioritize what truly matters, ensuring the best possible future for our students. Thank you.
Diane Hansen.
Are you ready, Mrs. Anderson?
I'm ready.
Okay, I'd actually like your attention. I know you don't like to give that to everyone as they come up and speak, just like you're not doing now. My name is Marissa Mallory. During the public comments before closed session, I handed trustee Blades a copy of the parent-initiated petition in support of OCSCS. I did this on behalf of parents who wish to remain anonymous, to avoid retaliation against themselves or their children. That should say a lot about this board and leadership in this district. Since the printing of that petition earlier today, the petition is now at 1,343 signatures and growing by the minute. I would expect you to look at me as I'm speaking. Please listen to the PyL community and do the right thing and approve the revision of this charter petition. And again, just everyone notice, Ms. Anderson cannot look any of us in the eye.
My grandson and my granddaughter attended Santiago Charter Middle School, and they loved it. Today, I opened up the Orange County Register and saw that the surf brands like Billabong, Roxy, Quicksilver, and Volcom are all failing miserably, and they are being sold off. Bought by investment companies, no one from the surf community guiding them, decisions made millions of miles away, no finger on the pulse, no idea what's going on at retail. Executives making the decisions while sitting in a luxury desk chair. They lost touch. I find a parallel here tonight. How can two of you in good conscience vote on the fate of this school without having set foot on the grounds? This is not what leaders do. True leaders are informed, and it appears that many of you are not, or some of you are not. In contrast to two of you, my wife and I have stepped foot and had a jaw-dropping and incredibly eye-opening wake-up call to what education could look like, personally with Dr. Beth Fisher and met with numerous teachers. OCSCS is mind-blowing. Personally, I think the two of you should recuse yourselves from voting, as you have no clue what this school is all about. I think it's the right thing to do, and you're right, Ms. Anderson doesn't pay attention to anybody, and that's crap.
Hello, my name is Paul Barajas, and I'm proud to work at OCSCS. The work there is allowing me to do what I do best, support students in ways that truly matter. As an intervention teacher, I lead an innovative program that helps students take ownership of their actions and their learning. This teaches them accountability and resilience, skills that will serve them far beyond the classroom. I also run academic support, identifying students who are falling behind and working with them one-on-one to help them improve and succeed. With my master's degree in social-emotional learning, I'm able to ensure that every student feels included, valued, and seen. This holistic approach to education creates an environment where students can thrive both academically and socially. This school gives me the ability to focus on what truly matters, the growth and success of every single student. That's something politics should never interfere with. This is why I believe that approving the revised charter is in the best interest of OCSCS and our students. As it will provide access to the grants and specialized funding, we need to carry out the mission.
Thank you so much. You Mark?
Mark, yeah.
Left me too many cards quickly.
No problem. Hello, Mark Sarver. I'm a 14-year resident of Yorba Linda, a head coach for 12 of those years, sports league board member, schedule for the league, painter of fields, fixer of scraped-up knees, and general opponent and supporter of all the kids in our neighborhood. I'm also a concerned parent of two kids currently at OCSCS, and a third that promoted from BYMS and remains in the PyLUSD district. One minute is not long enough to present any of the facts, not sure they would matter anyways, given the private sessions that our members are not allowed to be a part of. I am here today to testify as to my experience of being the proud father of three kids that have objectively and consistently performed well. They are served and thriving in their education at OCSCS. It is my personal testimony that Dr. Fisher has proven to me to be a powerful and effective servant leader at the school. It is further my testimony that the staff and teachers at the school are going above and beyond anything we could hope for as community members and deserve recognition. I support our school's dependent charter and the instruction my children have received.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next four.
As a mom whose children have promoted from BYMS and a future student who doesn't fit the typical learning profile, students look like OCSCS in my lifeline. I was thankful for BYMS, it did my typical kids. I'm thankful for what BYMS did for my typical kids, but what OCSCS does for those who break the mold may provide a different trajectory for their lives. This is a school where the belief that every student deserves a great teacher is not left to chance, but it's a core value. All where special education is seen as a service, not a place. OCSCS has a commitment to full inclusion, makes a world of difference, not just in academics but skill development, but in fostering a true sense of belonging. This school normalizes that all students can and will learn, and the staff's unwavering belief and alignment in this mission have earned them the well-deserved recognitions. More importantly, they serve as a beacon as to how all learners can thrive as a mom of a child with an identified disability. I won't have to fight for my son to belong.
Thank you.
My name's Kathy Ballinger-Apolo. I have two kids in the district. My daughter is at OCSCS. I'm here today urging you to be leaders we can be proud of. Board members, you were elected to these positions because your constituents believe that you could aptly represent them, putting aside your personal ideals. We, parents, staff, community members, and most importantly, students, deserve to see a collaborative effort between the board and school leadership. This should not be a place for political motivations, power plays, or retaliation. As one board member recently told me, retaliation at this point will only cause more damage to our already-broken community. It's time for you to put aside all of and focus on the best interests of our students. I'd like to remind everyone that the establishment of OCSCS was the direct initiative of PyLUSD in order to keep the competitive charters at bay. Dr. Fisher and her team did exactly what was asked of them with little time to spare. At the end of the day, we have them to thank for saving Bernardo, period. And with the exception of trustee Quintero, all of you voted for it and supported it. Now we need you to stand by your decisions.
Thank you.
My name is Sue Sawyer. Renee mentioned wanting to rebuild trust. However, she knowingly and willingly took over a colleague's job that ultimately forced him out of his job. Why would Renee Gray be named as an interim superintendent and now acting superintendent? It's hard to trust someone that asks to be protected from being let go, even for cause. Maya Angelou says, "When someone shows you who they really are, believe them." I'd also like to ask about the payments and delivery of the equipment for the training lab under RFP number 224-15. The contract specifies over $1.2 million for equipment, including items for the metabolic testing lab, CrossFit training room, weight room, speed and agility area, and mats. I'm concerned because these payments were made prior to receiving invoices. Has all the equipment promised under this contract been delivered to PyLUSD? Will we continue to follow the contract to not make further payments until we receive invoices from Training Lab? Why would it be pulled into the charter? The curriculum at the charter is great, it's something we use at Valdez as well...
Thank you so much, Sue. Dawn Miller. I just want to say, too, the board did approve OCSCS, and it sounds like it's a wonderful school, but was also approved as a district charter. And you can get grants, maybe not the one grant that you're asking for, but there are multiple grants that are available, federal and state, and local, that you can use. I believe our board will support your school, and they will support innovation, just like they support our schools, every one of them, that could come here today and probably share some of the great things that are going on. But why are we going to lose the control? And that is a real big concern. There's a financial impact, we have accountability concerns, you haven't even been a school for a whole year. We have equity issues. It could prioritize certain student populations, leaving higher-need students in the district-run schools. And we also could be competing now for students. We brought on the charter school so that we could get our enrollment up for the district. Thank you. Next four speakers. I think it's Ari Casperson. Cameron Kubask... Kubaska? Pam?
I strongly support the reinstatement of our superintendent, Dr. Chernus, deputy superintendent, Dr. Gates, and other administrators who are unfairly targeted due to political retaliation. Our superintendent has been instrumental in implementing innovative initiatives that have set OCSCS apart from other schools. It is unfortunate that his leadership has been politicized at the expense of our students. Under Dr. Chernus and Dr. Gates, our school has thrived by embracing change and fostering a culture of excitement for learning, and that does not exclude Dr. Fisher. This visionary leadership has created a foundation of excellence and innovation that our community takes pride in. Reinstating our superintendent will ensure the consistency and expansion of these innovative programs. Let's continue this momentum for the benefit of our students and their future. Reinstate Dr. Chernus and Dr. Gates. We admire you, Dr. Fisher, for everything you do for this community as well. I personally admire you, and we all love you.
Hi, my name's Craig Casperson, and I hated school when I was a kid. So when my son was born 10 years ago, I made a promise to him, to myself, and to every kid who dreads coming to school every morning, that I'd do everything in my power to create a better system of education. A system that values community over conformity, critical thinking over compliance, where students feel safe and seen and reconnected with the drive to learn about their world that is inherent in all kids before they enter most public schools. Unfortunately, most paths I've tried over the last 15 years to keep that promise has all too often been impeded by a seemingly endless amount of red tape. But when Dr. Beth MF Fisher...
Dr. Beth MF Fisher shared her vision with me, I knew I was where I needed to be. Through her leadership and the dedication of the incredible staff at OCSCS, I found a real opportunity to keep that promise. If you're still wondering why this petition was submitted, I ask you to take a look around the room and see how many of my colleagues are here because of their dedication to a shared vision. They aren't at home with their families or getting some well-deserved rest after spending a full day with hundreds of young teenagers.
My name is Cameron Kubasak, and I am a sixth grader at Orange County School of Computer Science. I know this hasn't been said yet, but I'm here to support my principal, Dr. Fisher. She's already made a difference in my life. She's opening so many doors for me and my future. She listens to students and all of our concerns. For example, she's trying to get different programs into our school because so many students want one. She protects her students when something happens like bullying or other personal issues. I love the different mini-electives we have at OCSCS and how I'm learning to be a leader. I believe in Dr. Fisher, and I believe in this school. The heartbeat of this school is Dr. Fisher, so don't ruin it. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. With our children at the heart of this message, I stand before our community and its elective representatives as an obvious OCSCS supporter. I'm also a parent of an OCSCS student and a volunteer on campus within a mini-elective. I understand somewhat the scrutiny surrounding the creation and funding of PYL's finest charter school. Doing what is ethical and empirically supported can be a unique challenge in the field of education. I'm sure you're all aware of that. I've utilized various trustworthy sources to understand that autonomy for OCSCS will strengthen us as a district, as a community, and as neighbors. When we adopt the charter revision, the Placentia Obalinda Unified School District will win. Thank you so much for your time.
Pam?
Maybe I'll provide a much-needed break. I want to talk about ASB. I have nothing against the organization itself. I don't have anything against the contract that's on your agenda, but there always seemed to be something unfair and discriminatory about ASB. Are there any other organizations in the school district where you incentivize parents to fund ASB and then give them discounts on the yearbook or football tickets, et cetera? Why can't, why can't parents have the option of funding something else and get a discount on the yearbook? Do parents actually pay into ASB once their kid is part of that program? I'm sure there are a lot of parents who funded, you know, something on the dance team or a football team or basketball team who'd like a break on paying other fees, especially when their kid sat on the bench or didn't get to participate. So to me, there just seems to be something unfair about how ASB is funded.
Thank you. Next four speakers. Leslie Alexander, Shannie Murray, Crystal Noble, and Ellie.
My name is Leslie Alexander. I would like to begin by saying what a pleasure it is to see Leila as our student board member. When Leila was a student at YLMSS, I knew that her hard work, commitment to excellence, and her kind heart would serve her well. Congratulations, Leila. This is well deserved. Secondly, I would like to submit that OCSCS remained a district charter under the oversight of the PYLUSD board. The rushed application for conversion to an independent charter should be rejected as it is missing required components. Additionally, USI should not be included in any proposal as it is a district asset that has cost the districts millions of dollars. Also, the proposal should not include any component that undermines the current program at Parkview School. Furthermore, the charter school should be able to demonstrate over time that it can maintain its enrollment, that it can operate with a functional master schedule that does not require a large amount of substitute teachers on a daily basis. That addresses potential...
Thank you.
Shannie Murray. It sounds to me like OCSCS is off to a great start in PYL, so I don't understand how making it an independent charter and taking USI with it benefit PYLUSD, the district you're supposed to represent. How can giving away a school be in the best interest of our local students? I have been part of the PYL family for almost 20 years, and there's always been a tremendous sense of community. I truly believe OCSCS has more opportunity for continued success by remaining in the district and leveraging PYL's wealth of knowledge and resources. I hope you, as a board, engage with the charter's students, families, teachers, and staff to learn how best to support them, but I trust you can find that support within PYL. If this board has the best interest of PYL students at heart, and if it can put aside partisan politics, then I see no reason not to vote in favor of maintaining OCSCS and USI. Unity in PYL is working together, not walking away.
I have a dream that I can go to OCSCS. So please support OCSCS, because good is in our hearts. I like OCSCS, his things, because they have things I love. OCSCS is in all ways.
Thank you.
So cute. Hi, Crystal Noble, mother of three in the district. Regarding OCSCS, our district charter, which will remain our district charter, provides incredible opportunities for our kids. We have a unique opportunity to support its continued growth. I want to express my gratitude to the staff for their dedication, hands-on learning, skills-based instruction, and project-based learning opportunities, and especially to Dr. Fisher, who has poured her heart and soul into the school. What OCSCS has accomplished hasn't been easy, and they deserve our full support. These changes will open the door for more funding, which directly translates to more opportunities for our students. Our focus should remain on giving our children the best possible access to quality education. Let's stand together to ensure OCSCS can continue to thrive for the benefit of our students. This opportunity will benefit our district as the school has promised to be one of the best charter schools in California. I want us to be known for the greater learning opportunities our district provides. Please vote to approve these changes. Thank you.
Okay, next four. Sonoma, Debbie Vanderlei, Chelsea Kaiser, and Mark Holt.
Good evening. I'm here to advocate for kids, not just OCSCS. I want to advocate for kids to learn at their own level. I wish you would ask what kids like me want. We are the next generation, and we want to learn the way OCSCS teaches. Thank you.
My name is Debbie Vanderlei. Our twin boys met astronaut Mark Kelly when they were five. Since then, they wanted to become astronauts, just like Mark Kelly and his twin brother Scott. The very first time we heard Dr. Fisher talk about OCSCS is vision and future. Our boys say this is where they can start their journey of becoming engineers and eventually astronauts. We live in Fullerton. We drive our boys across town every day to be at CSCS. That's an investment we are willing to make. OCSCS is an investment in the PYLUSD, but in order to fulfill its vision, it needs a greater investment than this board is capable of providing. Please vote yes for OCSCS to be autonomous in order for the school to apply for the grants that they will fully fund our school's initiatives. Support our students, enabling their dedicated teachers to grow the next generation of engineers, astronauts, and more. I hope you all...
Thank you so much.
All right, here we go. Hi, my name is Chelsea Kaiser. I'm a parent of a sixth grader at OCSCS and have been a parent in the PYLUSD school district since my child was three years of age. I want to come and share with you our positive experience in being able to reach kids with different learning needs and special education students. My son is on an IEP and is doing well at OCSCS. Their flexible schedule and learning model has allowed for my son to effectively get accommodations and services that he needs without being pulled from classes. The unique skill-based and master-based learning that is used to monitor student progress helps to identify more specifically where his strengths and weaknesses lie, providing a reference for targeted intervention for not just my kid but all of the kids. The amazing administration, positive learning culture, teacher dedication and enthusiasm, flexibility with the school day, focus on full inclusion, and commitment to helping children that learn differently makes this school a huge asset to PYLUSD. I feel honored to get to be a part of it and so happy that PYLUSD has brought this school into existence. I hope the board will continue to support the innovative school by voting in ways that will allow the school to flourish. PYLUSD and OCSCS have the potential to be champions.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Holti. I'm a business owner, and my wife and I have four kids that have either gone through the district or are in schools. I think we all do want unity, and I think we're all tired of divisive politics and things like that. And the sad thing was that during the election, there was people that were obviously not focused on the kids, but focused on power and slander and character assassinations and things like that. But what's encouraging is, even though then, people were saying, "Oh, that school is horrible, and the people don't like the principal, and all the teachers are miserable," and all these things. But we have the truth here with all the people and the kids, coming up here especially, saying how they love the school and they look forward to learning there, and the teachers that are doing great, and the principal is doing awesome. And that's what we need. And this computer thing, it's not a fad. It's kind of like gonna keep on going.
Next four speakers. Samantha... Sprodowski. Mary Cruz Holti. And Ryan Lynn.
Hi, my name is Dr. Samantha French. I am a community member, a parent, a neuropsychologist, and on the advisory council at OCSCS. I want to talk to you first and foremost as a parent. My son's been in school with PYLUSD since kindergarten. He hacked your school's firewall in second grade. He rickrolled your entire principal's school list last year, and he's not neurodivergent, he's not neurotypical. He's a 12-year-old boy whose goal is to be sigma. And he learns a little bit differently. He didn't thrive in school. In fact, during fifth and sixth grade, he was bullied endlessly. He was sexually harassed, and nothing was done. He feels safe at OCSCS. He feels that he's learning. His executive functioning has skyrocketed. He can problem solve. He can use judgment. And now he wants to be a lawyer so he can argue and get paid for it. I will say, as a neuropsychologist, however, allowing the school to do their own grants puts expertise where expertise lies, and that's in Dr. Fisher. As a PhD, I also know about writing grants, and it takes a special skill to seek out these grants, and I have faith Dr. Fisher can do that.
Thank you.
As an advisory council member at OCSCS, I've seen incredible things. One of the most inspiring moves has been proving that special education isn't a place, it's a service. Special education doesn't mean segregated classes. To sustain the success at OCSCS, they must become an autonomous charter to qualify for critical grant fundings that they aren't currently accessible to. This significantly increases the resources for the whole district. Why would you want to limit their growth? Why wouldn't you want money that's going there that can come to the rest of the district? You're limiting everyone if you don't want this to happen. Please vote yes to approve the revised charter petition. And as Renee Gray said, restore our trust and bring back Dr. Chernis and Dr. Gates and the other people that you have put under investigation. They can work while you're doing your thing to look at what they're doing. We are all innocent until proven guilty. I urge you to make a change.
Thank you so much.
Hello, good evening. My name is Mary Cruz Holti, and I just wanted to remember that, you know, technology is super, I mean, moves so much. I want to ask you, how many times have you changed your phone, your computer? Because it evolves so fast. So if the charter has the possibility of getting more grants, then because these kids are going to be our leaders, we're getting older, and we need to have those kids well-prepared to help us with the new challenges we're going to have. So if we can have unity and think about what is the best for our students, what's the best for our kids. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Hello, I'm Ryan Lynn, and I'm a recent 2024 IB graduate of Valencia. I'm here today because I am concerned about the petition for OCSCS as an independent charter. What I'm not doing is discounting the work by OCSCS faculty. I am alarmed about the lack of transparency by OCSCS and USI. I urge for fiscal transparency and accountable spending in this board. As a PYL alumna, I know the amount of good we can do when we invest in our education and teachers. I wouldn't be able to thrive today without the advice and guidance my teachers have given me. By allowing the conversion to an independent charter, this district loses the millions of ADA funding and obscures the potential mismanagement of district leadership over the past few years. Moreover, PYL will be giving away millions of equipment to an independent charter and all the equipment from the Innovation Lab and USI. By making these rushed and brash decisions without full financial and administrative transparency, we drive away the amazing faculty and families and reject our most fundamental principle of putting kids first.
Next four speakers. Alyssa Wong, David, and Scott Sheba.
Hello, my name is Alyssa, and I'm a proud recent IB and Valta grad from Valencia. Congratulations, Leila. I'm a current computer science major, and I firmly believe that computer science is a future. However, I am concerned about the OCSCS charter process. I worry that OCSCS is hastily pivoting to an independent status when its place in the district does not seem to be clear. OCSCS has not kept its initial promises while constantly changing its identity, and by becoming independent, we lose the money invested into the program. And I believe that we should continue supporting the students there, but not at the cost of the majority and the other students that are currently in PYLUSD. I believe that, sorry, I believe that OCSCS can remain as a public charter or turn into a magnet. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Dave?
Dave Redlauer. We keep hearing about misinformation by the same people who are peddling it. No one is trying to close down the OCSCS. Stop telling us that. Stop telling the board that. And stop telling your children that. That is not on the agenda tonight. We're hearing words like mind-blowing, incredible, amazing, life-changing, impactful, something special, inspiring, thriving students. All of those, all of those adjectives have been achieved at the OCSCS as a district-run charter. This is putting the cart before the horse. We haven't even been there a year. We made a two-year commitment. Let's see if the model continues. If it does, we can consider changes. At this point, with a deficient position requiring an MOU, we're being hasty, and we're putting assets and students at risk. The nobody I have yet to hear anybody talk about... The nobody I have yet to hear anybody talk about the benefits of adding the USI and the charter and the independent charter.
Scott?
Good evening. Scott Sheba, parent of a third grader at Glenview here. I'm not here to speak in support of or against the independent charter. I just want to look at the financial implications of the charter as it's written right now. As mentioned by the speakers, it's not really clear why this revision calls for absorbing the USI into this charter. As we saw from last month's interim financial report, the costs of that program are not yet fully known. We just had a discussion last month about how $30,000 worth of couches and having to put limits on purchases over $20,000, which seem to be happening all too regularly. As a parent of a DLA student at Glenview, that makes me a potential future parent at the school, and I would worry what would happen to the other programs like DLA, music, et cetera, that would be limited by the ADA from only OCSCS students, not being sufficient to absorb the financial burden of this program, especially if we're not able to find these grants that everyone keeps talking about. So I would only ask for those people, be careful what you wish for because you might run out of money. And if the board does choose to approve this petition, please move the DLA program to a different school that doesn't force us into a charter.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment, and I think we're going to take a 10-minute break. Okay, I call this meeting back to order at 8:42. At this time, we'll ask Dr. Beth Fisher, Principal of Orange County School of Computer Science, to come up and give her presentation.
I need to clarify something. Renee Gray, not everybody actually has been very supportive of this charter school. And so as Renee is taking on a new role, I need everybody, I need my OCSCS community to hear me very clearly. Renee Gray has been one of the few vocal and consistent champions for this school and for me. So I need that clarified. Regardless of what happened, I need you to hear she is a champion. Okay?
Okay, we need to move on with our meeting. So if you want to do your presentation now?
Yeah, I want to voice my concern, okay? Because I have had two legal attorneys advise me pro bono, and what I am concerned about is the good faith effort and that there is a lack of fairness towards our charter school, especially when there is a separate attorney who has been hired and in the words of that attorney, create a common enemy to the board. So I am more than happy, at the end of the day, I just want to be here to answer your questions. I think the public comment was very clear. It's going to be really hard for me to say other than this. I'll point out key facts, okay? When we talk about not being supportive to the charter and people who are. Some of the findings that were presented in December have to do with our original petition. So I am questioning, why were those not brought up last year? Were those brought up now because people want to make it difficult for this charter? And with the nine minutes left, I'm going to become a teacher right now. Okay? So we're going to do a little bit of check for understanding. Turn and talk to your partners for no more than 15 seconds by making these changes if they are approved. Are we an independent charter or are we a dependent charter? Turn and talk to your neighbors. Okay. Please stand up if your partner said dependent charter. Okay, you will notice that these are the people who have taken the time to get informed. We did not make the request to become an independent charter. So as people keep on saying, I don't want it to be an independent charter, I don't want it to be an independent charter, I don't want it to be an independent charter. Those of you who stood know, we are only asking to change our funding structure. Go ahead and have a seat. So let's check for understanding because I know that sometimes we need to hear it in different ways. By requesting these changes, give me and no other fingers, we do teach middle school. Give me a thumbs up if this change results in us remaining a dependent charter, a thumbs down if we become independent. Let's check for understanding. Thank you. Now that 100% of us, and if you see a friend who did not raise their hand because they're shy, let them know they can have the courage to speak in the class and please make sure that you correct them. The other thing too, I presented to my advisory council every bit of funding that was represented and approved by the board. So we, based on the accounting of people who are no longer here, the total startup cost for OCSCS was $1.38 million. $1.38 million. Not that much. So what I hear this board saying, okay, or I should say, I heard one person say, nothing will change. So what I'm walking away from hearing is that this board, regardless of if they want to let us have additional access to funding, and that's completely your choice, I hear that this board is going to make the commitment that we still get to fund the ADA. I'm going to make the request that we actually enter into an MOU for that because I don't want in two years, one of you to be gone and then say, oh, I don't know if I'm going to do this anymore. As the state of California tightens their belt and as we bring in more ADA, I am the principal of this school. The parents want me to advocate for more improved tools, learning, everything. So do I like being demonized for being in this position? But guess what? You kind of got to have a thick chin to be able to do it. So yes, I will stand here and advocate day after day after day for our children. The other thing that I want to address, and then I'm going to look to some of my staff, what are some of the other misinformation that we keep hearing? Teachers don't want it. Okay, you guys, staff? Am I torturing you? My goodness. The other thing too, I want to address some misinformation, and I do recognize to our retired educators, to those of you who put in so many different years, I'm grateful for your years of service. When I hear, let's take PYL back, I often question, because my husband and I went to UC San Diego and we went to college with people who graduated here when Esperanza was in their glory days, pre-CST. Okay? Nobody's taken away the greatness of this district. I am from the 909, my husband is from the Bay Area, and we know Esperanza football. Now I have to ask you guys, what do you want to be known for right now in 2025? Because I'm going to tell you, we are, it's embarrassing. I sent out a letter to this board and to my advisory council, the foremost leaders of education, sent letters of support for this school. And why did they send letters of support for this school? Because they ultimately know, because one of the three of them runs their own independent charter, they ultimately know when charters are given the opportunity to access funds, they can do incredible things. My mentor runs a charter school, an independent one. Reminder, we are dependent charter. Reciprocal learning is very important, guys. We can always revisit what we've learned. We are a dependent charter. I want to be able to, like my mentors do, bring in $3 million annually. I heard some misinformation that needs to be clarified. Oh, you can get charters, you can get grants, no matter what in your structure. I am more than happy, or do a PRA, it's not going to be the first thing people do to me, do a PRA. You will find in my email from the charter division that we were denied grants because of our budgeting structure. Department Chair Phil Sights, Department Chair Michelle Dateweiler were in the room with me when I was on the phone with the charter division for a second time. Hi, I really want to make sure, don't really want to go through this pain. Beth, you are eligible for a minimum of $800,000. Turn around and resubmit, this was the reader of the application, turn around and resubmit those documents. You'll get at least a minimum of $800,000. Now additionally, I'm also not new at this game. I hired CTE credentialed teachers. Let's give a shout out to our CTE teachers over here at the middle school level. That's right, you too, Noah. That makes you additional, eligible for additional funding. In addition to this, please go ahead and Google the unprecedented funds that are going to be going to charter schools this year. $93 million between now, the spring they're about to release, and June 30. There is the potential to have two funding cycles for charter schools with an autonomous or independent budget structure. So I recognize, I'm telling you guys, it's like a full-time job to keep up with the changes of the charter schools. I would question if any of you, and frankly, the one person who is an expert on charter schools, is on leave right now. So I am questioning why, when, we don't have a desire to be in competition. We do not have a desire to be in competition. And yes, am I speaking here firm? Do I get criticism because I am a strong female leader? Oh yeah, I get lots of criticism for being a strong female leader. But I do not want this community bamboozled. I do not want this community misled. I do not want this community up in arms anymore. I don't want an attorney to stand here and say that we can't overcome anything that's in a finding because it's simply not true. LA Unified does it often. There is a lot of charters in LA. There is nothing preventing us from working together besides will. So I am standing here asking you, okay? It's not about me. My husband asked me this key question. Babe, it's not looking like it's ending well. Read the writing on the wall. So I'm going to ask you a question. Would you do it all over again? And you want to know what my answer is? I don't actually care what happens to me. I don't actually care what anybody says about me or what is posted because in order to make change, you have to be willing to do difficult things. And over and over and over again, I will fight for my kids. I will fight for you, Maddie. I don't know if Janine's still here. I don't know if the boys are, I will fight for you, baby girl. You are worth it. You are worth it. The kids are worth it. Parents, when we have to do difficult things together, you are worth it. None of you drive, I love you guys. I love you. I'm literally screening my emails today to see our parents talking to me about real things today. So all I am asking is that we can take, I'm telling you right now, as a leader, I will bring notoriety to PYLUSD. This is my district. I live here. If your Belinda Realtor sold me my home, my children go to these schools. I don't understand why this is being so adversarial. It's time, let's stop. Let's go together and let's bring notoriety to this district.
Okay, now at this time, we have legal counsel here to speak. Sukie?
Good evening, members of the board, members of the community. Sukie Oluwalia from Atkins and Anderson. And I'm here to provide the board with an opportunity to, I'm here to provide the board with the information about the material revision that's been submitted and also to provide you with information about some of the ramifications from the modifications that are being requested. First of all, as was stated at the beginning of this meeting by the board president, if the material revision is denied by the district board tonight, the charter school will still continue to operate in accordance with the provisions of the charter petition that was approved in December 2023. So there is nothing that is on the agenda tonight whereby the charter petition, excuse me, the charter school would be closed. The only thing that's being requested is that material revisions be approved. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the process for material revisions, what has happened so far, and then discuss some of the actual revisions that are proposed. When a material, so a charter petition is essentially a document between the district and the charter school that defines the roles and responsibilities of each. Back when the Charter Schools Act was first enacted, we used to see charter petitions that were 15 to 20 pages. We now see charter petitions that are hundreds of pages. Currently, at this time, without the approval of the material revisions, this is what's called a dependent charter school. There is no legal definition of what a dependent charter school is. There's nothing in the Charter Schools Act, there's nothing that has been decided by any court of law. A dependent charter school, the phrase has just been used to describe a very close relationship between the district and a charter school. In almost all instances, when we have a dependent charter school, the charter board and the governing board are the one and the same. That's what we have currently. Now, the, I'm going to talk about a couple of different documents because there's not a single document that the board is being asked to consider. There are a number of documents. So this process started on November 14th with the submission of a clean document and a redline document. Unfortunately, those two documents were not the same, but nevertheless, on November 19th, there was a revised document that was submitted. And then at the December 10th board meeting, there was a document called Guide to Revisions that was submitted, which purported to respond to the district staff findings and made a number of fundamental changes that are not part of the charter petition. That document was now further revised, I believe, earlier, or last week or earlier this week. So at the present time, you don't have a single coherent document on which to even take action. With respect to the most significant change that is being proposed is the operation, excuse me, the creation of a separate 501(c)(3) corporation. And all of the roles of the operations, excuse me, roles, the duties, responsibilities of the operations, the hiring, et cetera, everything would be transferred to that separate 501(c)(3) corporation. By having that governance structure, that makes it an independent charter school. It is absolutely an independent charter school if you allow that, if you approve that structure. Additionally, I'd just like to point out that when the petition revision was initially submitted, there was reference to that particular charter board being selected by the executive committee. In the guide to the revisions that was just submitted, that's no longer the case. Now the charter board would be selected by the founder of the corporation. Additionally, there are a number of changes that are in the charter petition that would expose the district to potential liability and significant liability. For example, if you approve the revision and the separate charter board is the board of the school, making it an independent charter school, then they wish to remain under the district for SLPA and be considered a school of the district, and they also wish to have the district provide the back office services, and they also wish to remain under the district's insurance. If you are an independent charter, you should be getting your own coverage. And the district and the JPA will not allow the charter, that is an independent charter that does not share the same governance structure, to be insured under the district's insurance. So that proposal would be, the district would have the liability and would have the exposure, but would not have any day-to-day control over the operations of that school or even the employment decisions. Additionally, the charter has proposed, excuse me, that it would be the exclusive employer for purposes of the EERA. Currently, everybody that's at that charter is a district employee and has the rights under the education code and has the rights under the collective bargaining agreement. With that change, they are stripping the district board of the ability to make employment decisions at that site, and the employees that are at that site also would no longer have all of the rights and protections as district employees and under the collective bargaining agreement. This is not simply a change that you can cross out the district and add, you know, the charter. There are many, many implications. The charter proposes to add an independent study program of up to 1,200 students. Currently, the charter operates an in-seat program for grades six through eight. They're proposing, in the original proposal, it was going to be They're proposing, in the original proposal, it was going to be an independent studies program that was gonna go all the way to 12th grade. As part of the guides to the revision, they've now changed that to eighth grade. However, the charter is prohibited by the California Education Code from adding an independent study program until January 2026. There is an absolute moratorium on new independent study programs. So they cannot add those 1,200 students. Additionally, the charter proposes to have the Universal Sports Institute transferred to the charter. If it's an independent charter, which it would be because it'd be governed by a separate 501(c)(3) corporation, the transfer of that program and all of the equipment in that program would be a violation of the Education Code surplus property procedures, as well as violations of the Education Code procedures for the disposal of district equipment. The charter school, as an independent school, has no greater right to that equipment and to that property than anybody in this room. And that's why we have specific ed code provisions that call for the disposal of surplus property as well as personal property. And finally, the charter currently pays the district a pro-rata share. And the pro-rata share is, I'm not really gonna talk about it at length unless the board has specific questions. So under Prop 39, which is ed code section 47614, a charter school is entitled to a district facility. If you have a district facility, there are two ways of the charter paying for that facility. One is what's called a pro-rata share, and it's set forth and calculated pursuant to the provisions of the regulations. The other way is to charge 2% of the charter school's budget. But as you are probably aware, and because it was an Agendas for Closed Session, the district is also taking a look at two other Prop 39 requests that have been submitted from Magnolia and from CRLA. The law provides that all charters, regardless of whether they're authorized by the district, but if they're independent charters, all charters have to be offered the same costs. So whatever CR, whatever OCSCS pays, that's what CRLA, that's what Magnolia would pay. Those are two countywide charters. And the district will be having to make an offer of some type in response to their Prop 39 request that they submitted. So I'll stop for a second. I know that that's a lot of information. Are there any specific questions that the board has or comments, anything that I can address?
What is, what are the normal charter schools that are like running out? What's the percentage that they normally are? You said it would be two, they pay 2% or 3% us. What's the normal?
So the normal, it is very specific to a district, but when I looked at the one-page budget that was submitted with this charter revision, it looks like the district has been charging the charter $10 a square foot. And it also has been charging the, for the district administrative space, so the budget contemplates a payment of approximately a million dollars to the district under the current arrangement. And under the new proposed arrangement, that million dollars that currently comes to the district for the provision of that facility would be reduced to about $200,000.
So are, so OCSCS has paid our district almost a million dollars?
Yes, that's what the budget shows.
Okay, so they started up at 1.2 something million, so we're not losing as much money as.
So this is just space. That's not for services. I think that they pay separately for services. So I'm talking only about the space.
And so what is the $10 a square foot? What is that? Is that 2% or 3%?
No, no. So the $10 a square foot, like I said, comes to about a million dollars, so it's about 10%.
Okay.
But the proposal would have it reduced to 2%. And so whatever you give to them, if they're an independent school. You have to give to Magnolia and to CRLA.
And so the revision is for 2025, 2026. And so in 2020, January 2026, well, the independent study, you said that there's going to be new terms for the independent study? Do they, do we get opened up, the independent study?
We don't know yet. So originally, the moratorium was supposed to be for three years, and the moratorium was instituted because there were a number of fiscal improprieties, and it was supposed to be for three years. It's been extended several times, and some of the studies that were supposed to be done as part of that moratorium haven't been done. So I would suspect that that moratorium is going to be extended.
But as of right now, to say that there could be, possibly be independent study, technically, for the 25, 26 school year, independent study could be starting in January 2026.
Exactly.
So it's not necessarily illegal or whatever the, whatever the term was.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, well, it's illegal in the sense that if you offer it beforehand, you're not going to get funded for it.
Right, but we're just saying is if it's just in the charter revision that says we are gonna start January 2026 because that's when the state's going to allow it.
Yeah. Or until such other time as the moratorium is lifted. That's what I would put in there.
Okay. And then the SLPA, sorry, I have more. The SLPA. So if we, obviously, we were to take that on, what is the, what's the financial strain on the, what's different about taking that on than like what we already do? We take a lot of out-of-district transfers already. So what is the change? What's this, what are you talking about with this?
So with SLPA, a dependent or an independent charter school can remain a school of the district for purposes of special education. So what that means is that even if they're operating independently by the separate corporation, they can stay under the district's umbrella, and the district then has to provide all of the services to the students. In exchange for that, the district gets what are called the 602 funds, and also is able to charge an encroachment. And an encroachment is approximately, from what the budget documents that I looked at is about $1,300 a student. And so that is the money that is then paid to this district to provide services to the SLPA. To your point, like, you may have a lot of out-of-district kids, but those are kids that come in through the transfer, the inter-district transfer process. Charters don't have jurisdictional boundaries. And so they can enroll from Orange County or any of the contiguous counties. So as long as somebody's willing to drive over here, anybody can enroll in that school.
So with the charter then, if they were independent, even though I'm so confused if we're saying that there's no such thing as either one, would the charter be able to take that $1,300 a student? Would they take that money on instead of the district taking it on?
Well, they would have to be a member of a SLPA in their own right, and that usually takes at least a year or two.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if, so they would have to join, or so let's say, how established are we? Seven months by now, six months? So is there a process to join, so like a year or two?
Yeah.
And so there wouldn't be any of that funding because they wouldn't be?
I can actually answer that question.
Okay, perfect.
So actually, I, January, I just transferred to state, because I would be interstate or my two other charter schools. Their benefits of the, of the charter school, they're not past the deadline of changing their, to the overall charter SLPA, January 26 is the application. I know that all these have been here, and all those kinds of things, so we are still very much in the timeline. And I would actually request that you're in college, so on the California Department of Education website, if you search El Rancho Charter, if you look up El Rancho Charter, their status says independent charter. So I wanna make sure that as this attorney is representing this, I will remember that we look at what legalities are, that there is no such thing in the definition of independent versus independent. At a small year modeling, I think it's vital that I add that for the community information because people are just. What are the California Department of Education, is that El Rancho Charter is dependent?
So just two things. First of all.
Just a second, we're asking questions, and if we have a question to you, we will ask you, but please don't interrupt our meetings.
I think I, I think I kind of asked. I mean, or maybe you should just come up to the podium so you guys can jump back and forth.
Well, actually, actually. So the. Pursuant to the provisions of the Charter School Act, she is entitled, the petitioner is entitled to equivalent time and procedures that staff has. I am not staff, I am the board's counsel. So the time limit does not apply to me. Secondly, with respect to what she has indicated, and I saw also a posting about this, El Rancho Charter School, which is authorized by the Orange Unified School District Governing Board, is a dependent charter because it is not run by a 501(c)(3) corporation. That is why it's a dependent charter.
Okay, so I do, I do understand. So with the whole USI thing, I understand about the equipment, I understand all of that, and that makes complete sense. But technically, if the dependent study or the independent study is coming in 2026, what, besides the equipment transfer, would there be any issues for, for them to become an independent study program somehow? Like some type of dual enrollment? I don't know. I was just trying to think, like, how do we do that? Because we do have some USI students who want to also attend the OCSCS, like, so I'm wondering if that's, if it does go on in 2026, are we okay to like do dual enrollment like that?
If you have it remain as a dependent school with the district board being the governing board?
What if we have an MOU that says that these USI kids can also, you know, go into the charter? Is that legal? Can we do that?
You're still giving a district resource, an asset, to an independent corporation?
We would have to charge for it if we were gonna do that, right?
So that means we wouldn't be able to give any of the equipment. So if they became, they added independent study in 2026, that would not automatically include any equipment whatsoever, because if that were the case, then we are triggering the.
Surplus property.
The surplus property.
Well, I wasn't talking about the equipment, I'm talking about like dual enrollment, if they wanted a dual enrollment thing.
Yeah. There's a number of things, you know, that, there's a number of things that need to be understood by everybody about what's being proposed. And I think your question is an excellent question, but it probably should come after some of the other things have been discussed and understood.
Well, we're voting tonight, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, but as I indicated to you earlier, we don't really know what the board is voting on because there's so many different documents and so many different representations.
So you're saying that there's currently five different proposals that we have been given since November 14th?
Yes, yes. And the, just for.
And the staff has only really reviewed the one document? Is that correct?
So the staff reviewed, I think, three. I have reviewed the revisions, the guide to the revisions, and that's the one that responds to the staff findings and recommendations. And as I said, it doesn't just respond, it makes fundamental changes. Such as, you know, dropping grade levels, such as changing the corporate board, and this and that.
Okay, if I understand this correctly, if we approve this tonight, our insurance could cancel us? Is that with the district insurance?
No.
Because we'd be creating a liability of insuring a nonprofit organization?
They, they wouldn't cancel you. What would happen is if there's a claim that's filed arising out of something that happens at the charter school, they would deny coverage for that. Because you don't, you would then no longer have the shared governance structure.
So the, the charter would have no insurance, basically?
The charter would have no insurance. But, so the Charter Schools Act provides that when the district is the authorizing agency for a charter school, dependent or independent, it has certain oversight responsibilities, duties, and obligations. If it doesn't fulfill those responsibilities, duties, and obligations, then it is responsible for the debts and obligations of that charter school. So if the charter is not covered under the district's insurance because it doesn't have the shared governance, if something happens over there, the insurance will deny that claim, but that claim will be something that the district has to then pay out of general fund.
But this is for the following school year? So if we approve this tonight, we're not approving anything to change the school as we've said earlier. This would be basically September of 2025. Would that, the charter school need to have that insurance and, and everything if they were to become the so-called independent?
Yes.
So we couldn't get, we couldn't get bounced from insurance tonight because it's not changing anything until September.
But we're opening the door for, if we approve it.
How do we open the door? How do we open the door if nothing's happening until September 25th? Then we won't need to be insured until September 25th. We're opening the door to nothing.
I, I see it differently. I disagree.
Well, I'm not surprised. So I do have a question, and I don't think that this is giving away any secrets from Closed Session, but if this is the same presentation here as back there, then what, why was this done back there first?
First of all, I don't think it's appropriate to discuss what happened in Closed Session. That's attorney-client privileged communication.
Okay.
And the presentation tonight is for the benefit of the board and the public and the community to understand what the proposed changes are, because I think that there are a number of individuals that don't understand what the changes are. Clearly, from the very beginning of Principal Fisher's presentation, when she didn't understand the distinction between dependent and independent, and clearly, the community didn't understand that distinction. And it's up to the board to make a determination as to what you would like to do. But, so your options tonight are to deny, to approve, or approve with conditions.
And so have you spoken to our attorneys from Orbach Hough and Henderson who have been handling this? And have you talked to the staff who've been handling this up until now?
I have not spoken to the attorneys, and I have spoken to some staff members.
Which staff members have you spoken to?
Beth, no, sorry Renee, I don't know why you did, Renee. And I also spoke to, blanking on his name, Gary, before he left.
Okay. I think, can we have Beth Fisher come up to the podium to give us whatever answer?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, she just called.
I, I know, but that's a board decision.
Sorry, I will not clarify.
No, I'm just saying there's a procedure.
Why don't you bring her up to the podium so she can speak? Why don't, why are you trying to? You gave her 10 minutes. Bring her up there. You gotta vote, bring her up there.
It's a board decision. Bring her up. Ms. Quintero?
I'm just in a matter of time and going back, we can go back and forth all night, I think. I mean, I just, we've read the revision, we have the information, we have the council's information, and she's here to answer questions. I don't see the need for back and forth.
Okay, Mr. Frazier?
I know I'm hard to hear, but I would like to actually hear what Beth had to say because I couldn't hear anything since she's in the audience. So that, that would be beneficial, I would think, to hear her response. I, I am concerned about the insurance issue, the equipment issue. There are several things that if we wanted to move forward with this, we'd need to adjust as well, but I, I would like to hear what Beth has to say, but I can't.
My opinion? No, I think we need to just keep moving forward. We've had the statements, we've had hearings, we've been through this, we've had the statements from the staff, we've had our attorney. I, I think we're here.
I think we do need to move forward because we could, we could be rebuttling everything back and forth. And we, we just need to keep moving forward.
Sukie, is El Rancho Charter, is that they have a, do they have a 501(c)(3)?
They do not.
Is there anybody in the audience who might work at that charter that is saying differently?
So the.
I made a donation to El Rancho. I told you earlier, I don't have a lot.
So El Rancho might have.
Excuse me, we're not, this is the board's meeting, and we're not.
I asked Sukie.
Are you, this is your warning? I don't know your name, but you've been warned.
We know.
Okay. Thank you.
Santiago?
That you've been warned.
Public record in California.
Okay, you have been warned too? Okay.
Here, you can kick me out because she, Brown Act says she does have a time limit, and you guys keep doing this.
Okay, sir, you need to leave. Can we?
I will rather leave. You're a piece of shit, you. What she's here for.
Why are you looking at me?
You got a picture of the baby, I love her!
Okay. Let's get back to questions that the board have for Sukie. Is there any other questions that anyone? other questions that anyone has?
My only, my only concern is, obviously, we have Magnolia, and we have the CRLA coming in, and I understand what you're talking about with, if we offer our district charter, the, you know, a certain price, that we have to give everybody a certain price. I do understand about the USI, about the equipment. I think the independent study, I think it's, I don't think it's correct to just say it's illegal if it's actually, you know, in a year and a half, or maybe just a year now, because we're already January. So in a year, we could possibly, you know, have this independent study back. I, I understand, I understand where they're coming from. And so I was gonna ask you, Suki, how would, in a position like this, and you have 30 years of charter school experience, how would-
Totally aging me.
Okay, I'm sorry. I meant 13. How would you, what would be a solution, like, in all the things that you've seen? Obviously, we have this El Rancho charter, we have them fundraising, we have other, all these other charter schools fundraising. But then what we've run into issues with is, it appears that in the past, a lot of the funding has been questioned, the community has complained about the $1 million being put into the innovation lab, which has really put a lot of stress on the school, you know, saying it's taking funding away from all these other places. So this is exactly why this was brought forward tonight, was because they were looking for ways to move their school forward, if they had a board that was not willing to fund anything further, and the school's going to stay stagnant at where it is. I mean, it's not a stagnant school, but they won't have the ability to grow. And so what would your thoughts be for them to stay in this model into our school? What are their legal options, or what, what is their opportunities for them to try to fundraise extra money, to try to do anything like that? Or are they stuck, and they can only have what the board provides?
I, I think that's an excellent point and an excellent question. I've been doing this for 30 years, and a lawyer for almost 40, so I'm now dating myself. But what I would say is, my recommendation, given the amount of uncertainty about the independent study program, some of the other things that we've been discussing, is to keep the governance structure the way that it is. The governance structure, I think, from what I understand, listening to all the comments, it's a phenomenal school. It's a great choice for the community. I think every single person on the board supported it when it was approved, and every single person supports the charter as it is right now. It's these changes which have been brought in, like, a really, really rapid period of time, and are constantly changing and evolving, which has caused some of these concerns, concerns and issues. With the dependent charters, I work with one, El Rancho, I work with one, Western Center in Hemet, there's also one in Ucaipa, there's a bunch of them that are over by LAX. There are any number of individuals that really want to support charters, and they are willing to provide that funding for the charters. And so what we could do is, we could have something that's set up, that the funding that comes in is given, like, that's directly for that charter, is funneled to that charter, and it's not necessarily coming into the district. So that if there, I heard somebody saying, you know, I supported El Rancho and Santiago, so we could set up something like that. We could set up a foundation that is specifically for the benefit of the charter, so that it, the vision that Beth, or Principal Fisher has for this, and the vision that the parents and the community have for this, is realized.
And then if we did a foundation, and if we did set up things like that, there's no way that the district could take any of that money?
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, that would be the intent and purpose behind it.
For real, though. Like, we couldn't say, oh, we have $2 million in the OCSCS fund, and we need to, you know, to, to take it somewhere else, if they were to set up a foundation this way.
Yeah.
I had just had, even maybe as a, like, an ASB or a PTA, something of that-
I think Todd's speaking.
Well, just a second, Todd. That, like, an ASB structure, or a PTA, something like that, where it's a donation, where it can be housed separately?
Exactly.
I mean, I would like it to be, I mean, we're talking 501(c), which means you have specific requirements from the government to have that, that, that denoted status, and therefore the funds could only be used for the purpose set forth by the governing documents of that entity. Similar to REACH, I think, would be probably a good, closest structure like that. But we could fundraise for that, potentially, and then it'd be outside the district, but it would only go towards OCSCS. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, exactly. There's many different kinds of 501(c)(3) corporations. The one that is being contemplated here is one where all of the governance, control, operations, employment decisions, et cetera, would be made. You could have another corporation, don't approve this one, have another corporation to address exactly what you're talking about. You know, how can we fundraise? How can we get some grant monies? How can we get all the things that the OCSCS community, parents, and Principal Fisher want, and dedicate it to that school?
So we would need to, somebody at the district write grant money for, or to write grants for OCSCS?
Yeah, or somebody, like, even from, like, a lot of times you can have people, even outside the community, that really believe in a school, that are happy to, you know, provide that as well.
And you mentioned the word corporation. Are they able to become a corporation somehow, to be able to, because I think that's, this is the whole thing, is obviously, you know, you're, it's, it's just like what the speakers were saying. Things are changing so rapidly, especially with, you know, the things that they're dealing with at their school. So, you know, in two years, they could be an outdated school. So I think the funding is, is, you know, and then I also think, too, that in the past, you know, the, they've asked for extra professional development, and we've had questions from people on this board as to why, or denying the professional development for the teachers, when, you know, we're introducing new concepts, and it's like a constant evolving thing. And so I think that's the fear here. So I would say, like, I really think this board has to step up and say, we're going to support 100%. We're not going to defund. And I think everybody needs to make that commitment to go forward with this, with this school. We're not going to fire the principal, we're not going to defund the teachers, we're not going to take away the innovation lab, like, we're not going to do all these things. Because that's the fear here, and that is exactly why they came to us with what they've come to us, because of that fear of being shut down, not being funded, and that they were gonna be blood dry. And so I think that that's one thing we can commit to. I think it's fine. I, I mean, you know, I'm not really about the control of the school, so if we have a school, you know, and they're gonna, they could, I think they, they could thrive definitely by themselves, but I am concerned about their ability to thrive, unless the board is making the promises, and we're able to, you know, like, maybe have these other fundraising options.
Um, I'd just like to state, when my kids were in elementary school, we had a principal, and her name was Dory Stack. And she wrote many, many grants for our elementary school. We were the kickoff for the TK, early intervention. And she wrote a grant, and started TK, and then it spread throughout our district. She wrote a, a grant to teach math skills through music. Guess what? We got it, and we started it. She wrote a grant, and we started the CASA program, that is now spread out throughout the district. So, these innovations and grants are out there, we just need to look for them, we need to support them. And then, I'm also wanna say that many of our schools fundraise right now, and they donate money to their school, and it's put, and we approve those funds every, every month at our meeting in the gift funds. So, it will tell you exactly how much money was donated, and what it was for, and then that money is spent for those reasons. And it, it kinda blows me away, because I'm on the west side of the district, and the amount of money that is raised on the east side of the district is really quite shocking to me. You know, because we've had schools that have raised money to build all-new playground equipment, which is over $100,000. And they've been able to do that. So, I think we, we just need to use our resources, we need to use our innovation, as we like to keep saying. And I think there's other ways to support this school without some of these very concerning issues that are coming forward.
Um, I, obviously, as you know, visited, I agree, it's amazing school, and things that they're doing are great. My concern is the financial part, if you, after, I say my part, if you can explain the grant, if they were on their own, and the grant money they would be getting, how that would be, I guess, I don't wanna say restricted, but how that would be implemented. And then also, I agree, I mean, there's, like you said, there's a lot of schools that are, are funding their own things. I know, I was just at Venture and George Key, and they have a community member who has funded and gotten community support and business support to build their sensory garden. That same community member is going to hopefully secure funding from businesses and outside resources to make them a new playground that's accessible for their students. So it can be done, and again, being on the fundraising side too, as well, with PTA, I mean, there's, like you said, there's amazing things. I mean, we were able to give Chromebook hearts and things like that, when we use our resources. And that's my concern, because as it is now, because I asked this question earlier, for just clarifying information, but as it, as it stands right now, OCSCS is running about $1 million and a half, dollars, I believe, past their ADA allotment. So even if they kept their ADA as it is now, there's still a million and a half more that they're spending over the ADA. So that's my concern, is I would hate to put this program in jeopardy, and possibly not either get as many grants as we thought we would if it was an independent charter. And then, what do we do? And then there's also, I think, misconception too, because I did look into the El Rancho model, I've done a lot of research this weekend. And El Rancho, I know everybody kept saying they fundraised, or they had money for their gym when they built it. That was actually, from what I found out, it was actually a loan taken from the district. They funded that with that, so they had to come to the district with district help to get the money for that gym, and then they had to pay the district back, with the, with the constraint of that, if they didn't pay it back, that school would now become back to the district. So that's not a place I would want to see OCSCS have to be in. Like I said, it's, it's new, we're not quite sure of, with innovation and progress and things changing, things get more expensive too. So we don't, what may cost something now, next year or two years from now, may be a lot more. So I would hate to see them get in a bind financially, and not be able to support themselves, and then what happens? So, I'm concerned, like I said, of the financial side of it, and then if you can explain the grants.
Sure. So, let's talk about two different kinds of grants. So first of all, to, to the question that was raised earlier, you know, what else can, what other kinds of money can this charter get? There are a lot of foundations, including the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the Walton Foundation, a lot of those organizations that have grant monies that are specifically available to charters. And they don't necessarily take a look at the operational structure or the governance structure. So I would strongly encourage OCS to look into at least those two. If they work with California Charter Schools Association, they can provide them, you know, numerous other references. The grant monies that have been discussed are those grant monies that are federal grant monies, that are then dispersed to CDE, and then CDE takes those grant monies and disperses them to the charters. So, the grant money is dispersed to a independent charter, it has nothing to do with the way that it's funded, okay? So, there's indirect funding, and then there's local funding. So indirect funding means that the money for, whether it's an independent charter or a dependent charter, comes to the district, and then it's dispersed out. We rarely see that, except for dependent charters, or for, like, brand-new charters, and we're a little bit worried that their operational structure, or that they don't have the business acumen to really get it up and off the ground. So, what they're proposing is to have the money go directly to them, and that's what most independent charters do. The grant money is not tied to that. The grant money is tied to the governance structure. And I know that, because about 15, 20 years ago, many, many districts that looked at all the grant monies that were available to charters, said, why don't, why can't we have some? We educate, you know, all of the students, why can't we have some? So we started having district boards authorize and approve dependent charter petitions. Then, the, the federal government and CDE said, no. You can only get these, they're called PCSBG grant monies, you can only have them if you have a separate governance structure from the authorizing agency. So that is the only way that they are eligible for those grant monies. Right now, because they're already, so, those monies are available to new schools, expanding schools, and replication schools. So, they're no longer considered a new school, but they would still be eligible for an expanded school if they were to add grade levels, or add, like, another type of program. Obviously, we talked about independent study is not an option until January 2026, but if they were to add, for example, grade levels, they could potentially be considered for that. There are grant monies, the 24-25 cycle, I believe, is closed. Also, the thing to understand about the grant monies that are the federal grant monies, is that they cannot be used for the standard operating practices, sorry, expenditures, salaries, and things like that. Because what those grant monies say is, that if you have state or federal monies that are already being allocated to you for those expenditures, you cannot use these grant monies. And it's also a reimbursement grant. So you spend the money, and then you submit the, you know, request for reimbursement, and they send it back to you. Now, if you're coming up with, like, a new program, you might be able to use it for professional development, or something like that. These are usually one-time grant monies that are distributed over a one-to-three-year period, and then depending on what you submit, what you're asking for, they give you a window for expanded schools, they give you a window of about three years to spend that. But they're usually one-time grant monies.
And you're saying that they can apply for this now, in this, in the type of structure that they're under?
They cannot.
Right, okay.
But they can't apply for other foundation grants and grants, just anything outside of what this specific grant is for?
Exactly. And, and there's lots of grant monies that are available to charters. I personally know of, you know, Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and the Walton Foundation have sent, or given a lot of grant monies, and I think to the points that were made earlier, if there were grant monies that were received, perhaps they should be put into a separate fund that's dedicated to just that school, and is not coming into the district's general fund.
We have a lot of business in Orange County that this particular program would be of interest to, I think. And we have Samueli Foundation, Orange County Community Foundation, there are a lot out there that would focus on this. I, I live in the grant world, and they're a lot related to arts and music, and innovation, technology, all of this kind of thing. So I think that there are some available, it's just not in the education realm, as we're seeing. But just for all of you, I like this school. I toured it in October. I went around with Mrs. Fisher and her, and Mrs. Givens, and one of the math toses there. I went to the classrooms, I talked to the kids, I talked to the teachers, I saw what was going on. I voted for this, even though I have questions. It's okay for me to have questions, and it's okay for me to wonder what some of the funding is, because I didn't feel like I was getting the information that I wanted. That doesn't mean that I think that this school should go away. It doesn't mean that I wanna take things from the school. I want this school to be successful. I think computer science is part of what we all need to be doing. Ideally, I, I would like to see us find out what are the best practices related to this, and how can we utilize that in other schools around the district. I thought that from the beginning. What I, what I also want to make sure you all know is that we were elected to this position, we are here to oversee the schools, and that includes OCSCS. But we also support all of the schools. I think everybody, all of the schools should be treated fairly. It should be equitable. If we're doing a lot of extra programming at this school, we should also be considering extra programming at other schools, so that it is expanding what we're doing. Maybe we have computer science at one school, but maybe there's something else we should be considering at another school. It doesn't mean we stop here. And it doesn't, I, I don't want this to go away. So just so that you all hear me, please believe me. Don't listen to what is on social media, nobody speaks for me out there. I like this school. I want it to succeed. I want these kids to have opportunities that interest them. I had kids that went to different schools around this district because they had specific interests. And I want that for all of your children. I want that for my own grandchildren. So please believe me, please stop listening to what's on social media, saying that I don't like this school, I don't like the teachers, I don't like this, I don't like that. That's not true. If you actually go to my social media pages, I'm barely on it. So, I, I just want you to all know that, and I love this district, and I want every school and every student- district, and I want every school and every student and every teacher and every parent, everybody in this district to be successful. But I do have questions about this.
Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, no comments. Ms. Leila?
Yeah.
Since you are the computer science expert on this table.
I just see, I can kind of see both sides of the argument. I feel like, um, you know, you should be able to have funding, especially because computer science is fast and developing. Um, but I do have concerns in terms of like financial stability. I think, you know, with the switch to the insurance in September of 2025, like, I just want to make sure that that transition will be smooth so that nothing, like, it would just move in an upward trajectory for the kids. I don't want it to be like, oh, well, now we're switching our financial structure and, you know, now there's some instability in the school. Those are my only concerns.
Thank you.
So I have, I have a question. Um, we, how come, they had asked for um an attorney, OCSCS, you know, to come and, I guess, talk to Suki or do whatever, and we never granted them. Would we have been able to, like, basically talk or like mediate between this and sort out all these problems and then come with a better petition had we done it that way? I'm just, I'm just curious, because it seems like a lot of this, like, it seems like, okay, like, USI can't go into this independent study, not till 2026, um, you know, just certain things. It seems like we could have come to maybe an agreement, and I think that that's what OCSCS was trying to do, you know, with the district. And I also think too, some of the funding, I, I understand, because they haven't received some of the funding. Um, the la, the person that was here before, we would approve funds, and they weren't getting their funding. So I understand what their struggle is because we have, I think, two or three teachers in this room who have spent over a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars out of their own pocket because we approved funding and it didn't-
Every teacher?
No, I'm sorry. But what, not for your own school supplies, not for school supplies, not for some, not for Kleenex or something for your room. It was something for the Innovation Lab that was approved by this board, but we, they didn't get their funding. They were never paid for it. So to open their school, they paid the, the money out. So it's not, no, they have not been reimbursed.
Well, then we should definitely look into that. Mrs. Gray, can you put-
So that's why I think that there is that certain concern is, you know, when you talk about the grants. So I understand, I understand exactly why they want to go and find their own money because we've approved money and it hasn't even gotten to their school. Um, so that's my question is, when we didn't, when they asked for the money for the attorney and we didn't give it to him, I kind of feel like we gypped like this whole process because we could have came, we, obviously, we brought on a new attorney. Our attorney never spoke to the person who is basically doing this whole thing for the last year. Like, we could have ca, came together and been able to maybe work this out and then to present something to the board. And I think that that is still something that, um, you know, can be done. And I think it would be very easily to be done. But I guess, does this board, you know, want to do that? So?
I, I just have a question. So when this originally came up, well, not even a question, just a comment. This originally came up, and this was presented as um a, a charter petition that was created and written by Ms. Fisher. Um, when it came up from, for the, and I asked at the time, Dr. Chernus, uh, you know, did the staff, was the staff involved in any of this at all? And I was told no. And I was told no on the dais. And when the revision came up, um, it was, I asked about it um a day or two before because I heard rumors about it, and Dr. Chernus told me, nope, he didn't know anything about it. And then I'm also hearing that we were heavily involved in it and, and working through it with, um, with Dr. Fisher through all of this. So it's um difficult for me-
Who was heavily involved in it?
The staff. The staff was involved in it, working with Dr. Fisher on it.
I guess that would be, I guess you can't make the accusation because there she is.
Well, I, I was told by Dr. Chernus, no. And then I've read in um other instances, yes. And I've heard people say it was. Um, so that has always been a confusion and conflict for me because I wasn't getting the same information.
And I, I agree, like you said, to, we should have in hindsight probably done this different, but that was my concern as well, is that we rushed through this so much that we could, like you said, we could have done that, but that would have taken time. And that's what we're, we were asking for is time to look at this again. And so I think that was part of it. And a lot of the community thought it was time, more time was needed. Well, this also shows that, yes, more time was needed. So we can go through all that, those steps. So that was a valid, valid concern with the whole thing as well.
Right. But I think they, I think they have attorneys that are working with them or, or want to work with them, and that's why they needed the five thousand dollars. And I think their attorney wanted to come and sit down at the table with Suki and like work this all out. And they asked for this in December, and we just didn't give them anything. But we've thrown a lot of money at Suki to represent this board, and yet we kind of threw-
I think the study session would have solved a lot of these issues. And if we would have stopped and come together at a table and discuss, like, you know, the charter school, what are your issues and what are your problems? And what can we do as a district? And what legally and things like that? A lot of this could be solved. But we, you know, I asked for a study session last fall about the charter. I've asked for a study session about the revisions, and that hasn't happened. And I, I just think we haven't been communicating. We haven't all been getting the same information. I mean, just tonight, the misinformation that has been said and that every, I mean, three quarters of the room thinks this is a, a dependent study, but our attorney is assuring us that's an independent study. This is, this is why it's so important not to rush these decisions. This is why it's important to sit down and study these out and get direction from the board. And so we can help the schools. But isolating board members and not giving them information does not help. Um-
Who, who isolated you? We've all had the same information this whole time. We've had the exact same information. I've never seen, I've never seen the revision until it was given to the whole board. So your accusations are baseless and inflammatory.
So I want to say I did vote for this charter originally because I was excited about it. I'm excited tonight to hear the kids come and talk about their experiences, that they're having wonderful experiences at this school, which every kid at every one of our schools should be having. And our job as a board is to support all the students throughout the district and make sure everybody is having excellent um experiences. I have been on the campus. I went to the DS de las mortes event. I spoke about it. I even showed the, the things that I purchased with my own dollars from the, from the students that was made at the innovative labs. Um, you know, we just need to slow down and look at the, these things so that we can support this school and every school in our district and every student, because every kid learns differently. And every kid needs, we need to have options for our students, and that's what we're doing. I think it's time that we um make a motion. And I'll make a motion that we deny this material revision to the Orange County School of Computer Science.
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mrs. Buck. Um, are we ready for a roll call? Okay, um, Mrs. Blades?
So I want to approve it. So what will my answer be? You want a motion to deny?
I, I think you would say no.
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 Mrs. Quintero?
Um, unfortunately, because of the new facts and the new, I guess, twist in the whole thing, um, I would have to say, um, I, I would say yes to the denial.
Mr. Frazier?
I am going to say yes to the denial, but I would like to have this reviewed and, and possibly have another revision brought back so that we can get what we need at OCSCS. Um, unfortunately, there are several items that it doesn't, it, it doesn't seem like it works at this moment.
Okay. Mrs. Buck?
Um, I uh will approve the denial, but that does not mean that I am lacking in any support for OCS, OCSCS.
And I too will vote yes to deny. And I hope that this does come back, and I hope we have a nice study session and really do some problem solving together.
So, so the board does need to adopt um written factual findings supporting the denial. So I will be stepping away and preparing those based on the questions and the comments and the information that's been provided. And I will be coming back and having you adopt that resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Will we be doing that tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carried um four to one. Oh, yes, student board member, I forgot. Sorry.
Um, no.
So when you say no, it's a denial?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is a yes. Okay. Well, she said to deny, right?
Are, are you denying or are you approving?
Are you denying or are you approving the, the revision?
You approve.
Oh, you approve the revision? Okay, so that-
Four, four to one plus my-
Four to one, plus a one. It, it gets very confusing.
It's confusing. It's a double negative. Would you like me to do the next one?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion um that we approve resolution number twenty-four dash ten dedicating February 2025 as Career and Technical Education Month. I need a second.
A second?
Anybody second?
Second.
Oh, I said it. I wasn't loud enough.
Nope, I heard you, Todd, but you're quiet. You can give it to Todd, maybe.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mr. Frazier. At this time, I'd like to turn the time over to Mrs. Renee Gray to introduce Mike Young, Director of Secondary Education, who will read the resolution.
Okay.
As if people are leaving, if you could please keep your voices down so we can continue our meeting. Thank you.
Okay, February marks Career and Technical Education Month, a nationwide initiative aimed at raising awareness of the vital role career and technical education plays in equipping students with the skills needed for high-demand careers. Spearheaded by the Association for Career and Technical Education, this month long, month-long observance underscores the value of CTE programs and emphasizes the collaborative efforts of educators, industry partners, and communities in fostering workforce development. So, our Director of Secondary Education, Mr. Mike Young, will present the Career and Technical Education Resolution. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Whereas February first through February 28, 2025, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas profound economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in the structure and nature of work, thereby placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system. And whereas career and technical education prepares students to be college and career-ready by providing core academic skills, employability skills, and technical job-specific skills, and giving all students leadership opportunities in their fields and in their communities. And whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators, business and industries stimulate the growth and vitality of our local economy and that of the entire nation by preparing graduates for career fields forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District Board of Education does hereby support and designate February first through February 28, 2025 to be Career and Technical Education Month.
Thank you. Anyone have any comments?
As a North Orange County ROP board member, I appreciate all of the CTE work that we do and the collaboration that we have with them as well.
We have amazing programs in our district. And if anyone is interested before the cutoff date, I highly suggest you watch some of those great videos. So that being said, let's do a roll call. Mrs. Blades?
Yes.
Mrs. Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mrs. Buck?
Yes.
And I am a Mrs., a yes as well, and Miss Leila?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries five to zero with um an I from our student board member. Next item.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Acting Superintendent's Employment Agreement between Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District and Renee Gray.
Second.
Okay, I need to read something else. I gotta find that sheet here. Okay. So Acting Superintendent Renee Gray, pursuant to Government Code 54953, approve the employment contract for Mrs. Renee Gray as Acting Superintendent of Schools, providing one, a term beginning December 20th, 2024, and employee's appointment as Acting Superintendent may be terminated by either the board or employee at any time for any reason. And the Acting Superintendent's salary shall be paid at a daily rate of one thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-two cents, except as modified here. All other terms and conditions, including in Acting Superintendent Assistant Superintendent contract shall remain in effect. Is there any questions? Okay, let's take a vote. Mrs. Blades?
Yes.
Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Aye.
And an aye from me and our student board member?
Aye.
Perfect. Motion carries five to zero with an I from our student board member. Okay, next one we have is-
Sixteen point two.
Sixteen point two. Oh, oh, yeah. Um, I, we're gonna pull this.
Right, because we're already-
Because we already did her contract, so we're gonna skip that one. And we're going to go to sixteen point three.
I'll make a motion, we recommend approval of interim Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services Employment Agreement for Yolanda Mendoza. Um, sorry, Joan Velasco finalized in closed session prior to the open session of this meeting. Sorry, wrong order.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Quintero, and let me read out her contract. Interim Assistant Superintendent Admin Services, pursuant to Government Code 54953, approve the employment contract for Joan Velasco as interim Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, providing one, a term beginning January 15th, 2025, and employee's appointed as interim Assistant Superintendent may be terminated by either, be terminated by either the board or employee at any time for any reason. And two, the acting assistant superintendent shall be required to render up to nine hundred and sixty hours of work. Three, the acting superintendent, assistant superintendent's salary shall be paid daily at the rate of eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-two cents. The acting assistant superintendent is not entitled any additional compensation or fringe benefits. And four, the employee's appointment as interim assistant superintendent shall be terminated upon the effective date of the board taking action upon another individual being appointed as assistant superintendent. Are we ready for the roll call? Okay, Mrs. Blades?
Yes.
Mrs. Quintero?
Aye.
Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Aye.
And I am also an aye and our student board member?
Aye.
Perfect, we have a motion carried, five to zero with an "aye" from our student board member. Okay, last one.
I guess I'll read. I'll make a motion, we recommend approval of Acting Assistant Superintendent Human Resources Employment Agreement for Yolanda Mendoza, finalized in closed session prior to the open session of this meeting.
Second.
Who's that?
Mrs. Blades.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Blades. Any comments? Okay, let me read it out. Pursuant to Government Code 54953, approve the employment contract for Yolanda Mendoza as Acting Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, providing one, a term beginning January 15th, 2025, and employee's appointed as Acting Assistant Superintendent may be terminated by either the board or employee at any time for any reason. And two, the acting Assistant Superintendent shall be required to render up to 80 workdays. The acting Superintendent's salary shall be paid a daily rate of $884.62. The acting Assistant Superintendent is not entitled any additional compensation or fringe benefits. And four, the employee appointment Acting Assistant Superintendent shall be terminated upon the effective date of the board taking action to either reinstate the current Deputy Superintendent or upon another individual being appointed as Deputy or Assistant Superintendent. Any comments? Okay, Mrs. Blades?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Frazier? Heard it.
Aye.
And I am also an "aye" and Ms. Leila?
Hi.
Perfect. Motion carries five to zero with an "aye" from our student board member. You know you can go.
How's mom doing? Does mom want to go home?
Okay. Yeah, 16.5 is as amended, so.
Can I ask a question before we go to it? What is the VIP LLC for Fiscal Services?
No.
Yeah, that was. Five, so we're at 16.6.
That one's polled, so it's no longer, okay.
Yeah, but now. Okay.
And the 16.6 is where we are, and that one is not amended. The 16.6? Okay, sorry, I missed that. Oh, and it was not all. Correct. Okay, so I'll make a motion, we approve the agreement with the Placentia-Yorbalinda Unified Managers Plum and the Placentia-Yorbalinda Unified School District, PylUSD, as amended.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Blades. Any comment?
I'm glad we're finally settling this.
Yeah, I am too. Okay, Mrs. Blades?
Yes.
Aye.
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 I'm an "aye", Leila?
I'll abstain because I don't know what this means.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, motion carries five to zero with an abstention from our student board member. Okay, so we are at the consent calendar. Actions proposed on the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and our dean routine in nature. Judges receive board agenda backup information in advance of scheduled meetings, and we are prepared to vote with knowledge of the block vote items. Is there any items to be polled? Anybody?
I have, I'd like to pull number 21.2 and 21.3. Those are both the classified and certificated reports.
Okay, and then, I didn't get an answer to this, so I'm going to.
Didn't we, didn't we pull 21.2 already? You pulled, I thought you pulled 21.2 and 21.3. Amended it, okay.
We amended it. Okay, I'm gonna just pull 19.5. Anyone else? Okay. So now I need a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar besides the polled items.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by myself and a second by Mrs. Buck. Mrs. Blades?
Yes.
Aye.
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 And I'm an "aye", student board member?
I'll abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Smart girl, don't ever vote for something you don't know.
Okay, so motion carries five to zero with an abstention from our student board member. So now we will go to 19.5.
I'll make a motion, we approve the services agreement with Booster Enterprises, Inc. for Bryant Ranch to participate in their annual Jogathon fundraiser on October 29th, 2025. That's far away.
That's why I pulled it. I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Buck and a second by Mrs. Anderson. I just pulled this because it was so far away, and I just, it's in the next school year, and I just thought we'd have a quick explanation, so we understand why.
So in order to reserve Booster Enterprises, you need to get this in before, I believe it was December 9th, I'm looking at, yeah, yeah. So we had to get this in earlier in order to be able to have them for the following year. It seems so, like it's so far out, October 25th, which it is, but they required it. Do we have another date? That's why they're all here, thank you so much. Perfect. Oh yeah, yeah, these things have to be way in advance, yes, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. Okay, any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Blades?
Yes.
Aye.
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 I'm an "aye",
Once again, I'll abstain.
Okay. Okay, motion carries five to zero with an abstention from our student board member.
So we can take these two together because it's actually the same comment, if that's okay, for the next two, the certified and the classified. I'll make a motion, we approve the classified human resources report and the certified human resources report.
I need a second.
A second?
I just had a question to see if I had to recuse myself from this one.
No.
Okay.
It's already been amended.
Okay, okay, a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Quintero.
The reason why I pulled this is because under Parkview, under classified and certificated, there is a lot of sports that is assigned to their school, middle school flag football, middle school wrestling, flag football, cross-country. It seems like it's been classified incorrectly. Can we make sure that those are classified to the, to the right school?
Yes.
I think this came up at the last time we approved this, and it was for the middle school sports program. And I think we asked for it to be clarified so that we knew where the funding for the kids were going, and I think.
Yeah, it's either gonna be Tuffrey or another middle school. Maybe it's Tuffrey because it's on that same site, but it needs to be classified at the right school.
Yeah, we need to make sure we get that.
Yep.
Right, see that all schools are getting middle school sports, and it's just not all going to the one school.
There were two in the classified list and multiple in the certified.
None of that's related to USI at all?
It may or may not be, but right now it's tied to Parkview, and we just need to clarify it.
But isn't USI Parkview?
It might be Parkview.
Yeah, but are they doing all of the middle school sports over there? I mean, how many? I'd like to just have it reviewed.
What, what, what sports again? No, I'm not saying that. What, what, flag football?
Flag football, wrestling, cross-country. They've got their own set of coaches, so I don't know if it's related to that, so I just want to make sure. Because there are some times we put USI, and sometimes we haven't, so.
Mr. Yang, did you have a comment? Want to come to the podium?
You gotta push the button.
Hi, hi everybody. What I do know is that the secretary who orders for all the intramural sports, Debbie Ortiz, she actually works out of USI, which is also kind of underneath Parkview. So I think all the orders that I'm getting and approving for intramural sports come from her, so, but we do need to classify that better, so that it's really clear for you guys that this is middle school sports.
If you could also go back and just double-check anything that has been done in the past to clarify that as well, so that we're delineating it, would be awesome.
Yeah, I'll do that, thanks.
In all your free time.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Mrs. Blades?
Aye.
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 Aye?
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain. Okay, motion carries five to zero with an abstention from our student board member. Okay, we are done with the consent calendar, so now... Oh, we need that resolution.
Push the button, Todd.
It's printing, and so we will do our board report.
We'll do our board reports, that will give you a few more minutes.
And can we let Leila go now? I think it's probably time, right?
Thank you, Leila.
Thank you.
You've gone the distance, Leila. Okay, we'll start with our, our board reports. Mrs. Blades?
Let me go? I'm gonna keep it very short because of time, very short. So I've gone to a lot of basketball games, you know, because of winter sports, and I just have to give a huge shout-out to, I've been to, I haven't made it to Valencia's basketball games yet, but I've made it to Esperanza and to El Dorado and to Yorbalinda. And so Yorbalinda High School, boys varsity, defeated Villa Park with one second on the clock. And it was amazing, it was like the most intense game I've been at in a long time. And so that was a great time. The dance team did great, watching a lot of these cheer performances, just kind of being out and about, and Yorbalinda Boys also beat El Dorado Boys. And so you don't really know what to do in these situations, because you have friends on both sides, you don't know who to cheer for, what to do, but since I still have a kid at Yorbalinda High School, I, you know, can show some Mustang pride. Esperanza Girls Basketball's doing well, I'm not gonna say anything else, because I'm sure Todd will talk about it. But yeah, just getting back in, and, and I'm really thankful for all of the staff, because you guys have been under undue stress lately, and you guys have really risen to the occasion, and so we thank you for this, you know, for stepping up to the plate, especially in a time like this, and, you know, getting the work done and really focusing on making sure our students and our teachers, you know, have what they need to continue on. And, yeah, that's it, I'm gonna keep it short, and I actually like, I actually kept my promise, so.
Okay, again, I would like to also reiterate our gratefulness of your help and stepping up and making sure that everything's taken care of, I know it's a lot. And thank you to Renee as well for, you know, leading this whole thing and making sure everything's done right. So I really appreciate everyone as well. It was a busy month, I'll keep mine short as well, but I did have, luckily I had an extra week of vacation, so I was able to make a few school visits, and I'm very excited. But I hope everybody else had a great holiday break. I was able to visit George Key and the Venture Academy. It was great, I felt the caring, the warmth, the attentiveness right away when I got on campus. They're amazing, the staff, seeing what they're doing is just short of remarkable. I mean, it's, it's really, really good to see, and to see their principal really just leading the way and setting the tone for the whole school was great. I was able to see their sensory garden, like I said, I was informed about their, hopefully their new playground that'll come in soon, and I'm hoping we, as a board, could help them get that sooner than, hopefully than they are anticipating, and hopefully we can find some way to help them with that. I do wanna, I was excited to see the Venture Academy getting ready to go out onto their job sites. I was able to catch them before they left, and I was, just saw the excitement in their faces and, you know, ready to go, so that was great. And I want to kind of put a plug out there, if there's any businesses, anybody you know in the community that would love to have the Venture students' help in employing them, I know it's been a difficult time for them to find proper placements and placements for their students, so I would say the more the merrier. If we can get the word out, that would be great. And I want to thank the teachers there as well for welcoming me into their classrooms. I know it was a day that there weren't many students, because it was right after they came back from break, but it was great to see them and have that welcoming community. And then I, the next day I also went to, or I'm sorry, that same day, I actually went to Parkview and BVVA, and it was great to see their, their, you know, homeschool model, independent city model. I got to walk through the classrooms, I guess I'd say, and see some of the teachers, got to talk to them between their sessions, and that was a great thing to see firsthand. I had a great conversation with their principal, and really wanted to thank them for their hospitality as well, and there's great things, like I said, going on there. And with, especially how they've been changing, they've been trying to adapt as best as possible. The next day I went to OCCS, OCSCS, I've said it a million times, and I did have a good visit, I was able to tour many of the classrooms, I saw the Innovation Lab. Unfortunately, I didn't see it when it was in action, they were having a PD day that day, but I was given a tour of the machines that they have and the technology that's in there. And it was good, I was glad I went because I did get to see their PD model and how the time that they were given, I got to talk over their agendas that they were meeting about. And it was great to see the common language that they have on the boards, it was great to see all their, like, you know, to point out their quotes that they have around campus, to see that many adults interacting and being there on campus with them as well. Like I said, I got to go into some of the classrooms, talk to some of the students and see what they're doing, and it was great, it was really great to see the good things going on there. And then, I think that's about it. I had, oh, and I had a great conversation with Dr. Fisher too, and she was able to answer a lot of my questions, so that was really good to see. So yeah, those are my visits, and hopefully I can do some more. I know at the end of the month I'll hopefully be at El Dorado High School, and helping with their Career Day, so if there's anybody you know as well that wants to do Career Day and present at El Dorado, that would be great, and hopefully that's what I'll be next, so, thank you.
All right, I know that I'm a little bit hard to hear, and I don't have a whole lot to discuss other than the fact that it's cold here, and that's always a fun reason to come to Alaska. It is also my birthday, so thank you for spending my birthday with me, everyone.
Happy birthday.
And I just want to give a big shout-out to Renee for all the work that she's been doing. It has been a hectic back-and-forth, the, the level of emails and phone calls and things that I'm receiving, I can't imagine the level of what she's been receiving, so I just want to say she's doing a great job in where she's been put, and I know that moving forward, we're gonna get her the support she needs to make sure that everything can get done well, and the district continues to move forward in spite of the unique situation we find ourselves in. So thank you very much, and I look forward to being back at our next meeting in person.
Thanks, Todd.
I just have a few quick things I'll just highlight. Before we left on our little holiday, I attended the holiday lunch with everybody, the manager's luncheon at, at Lakeview, and it was fantastic, as usual, nice to see everybody there. And the costume, the outfit you had on, Baldwin was like top. I can't wait to see that again, and, or maybe the next iteration of what it's gonna be. I was so lucky to be able to, I was asked by First Five to talk to some of the early childhood coordinators around the county related to family homelessness and what they experience and how we can support. And as a result, I was asked to speak at our preschool advisory committee and talk to some of the parents there, the CCTVR, just talk to them about resources that are available. It was really nice to be able to do that and provide some needed insight. And lastly, I attended the threat assessment that was mentioned, the, the professional development that was held last week by Mr. Rick Grammer, he's an Irvine Police Department officer, and I met him. an Irvine Police Department, um, officer and I met him probably a month or two ago, a couple of months ago and we sat down for coffee and he walked me through all of this process that he thought would be great for us. So I am thrilled that he was able to, um, to come over and start to do some training. It was a really well-attended, um, training and it, I'm looking forward to what that is going to look like in the future. I think if we, the more we plan ahead, the better off we're gonna be in the long run, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, first, um, I gotta wish Mr. Frazier happy birthday. I hope you're having some fun up there with all the snow. I too am so grateful for Mrs. Gray and all the staff for stepping up and helping, you guys have been very helpful and supportive and, and I feel, um, I've just heard really good things about what's going on and that everyone is feeling really supportive, um, throughout the district. I too attended the district Christmas party and, um, the musical entertainment by Valdez Show Choir and the Lakeview kindergarten class. It was amazing and so many images, um, of just seeing cooperation and those kindergartners, you know. And we played a game, um, at the party and so now I know who the competitive people are in the district. So, um, I just wanted to thank everyone who participated and making this, um, event so special. So also, um, I stopped by, um, as Mrs. Buck said, to the comprehensive school threat assessment guidelines and, um, that are taking place throughout our district right now and I'm just so grateful for our law enforcement partners that are taking this training serious and training our staff and that we're all getting on the same page and I, I really love the focus of this, that it's on prevention and really working as a team approach. And I, I picked up some reading materials and, at the training and I look forward to, um, being able to read through it and learn more about this program and as we hear more about it, um, coming forward. So that is the end of my report. So now, we are to. The resolution.
Members of the board, um, I've given you a resolution setting forth the factual findings that are necessary for denial of the material revision. I do believe that the electronic copy was sent to Mr. Frazier, um, so you have the hard copy, we also have copies that are available for members of the public. As I indicated, you do have to make the written factual findings, so what this resolution goes through is, um, for example, we talked about the governance structure, we talked about the independent study moratorium, we talked about the insurance, we talked about the transfer of the Universal Sports Institute and then of course we talked about the fiscal and budgetary concerns. Um, so those are all identified in here and, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have about this resolution, but, um, you do need to adopt it, um, in order to effectuate the action that was taken by the board.
Well, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make one suggestion, may I? So on page two, under be it further resolved, I see there that it says, um, hereby denies the material revisions and the material revision charter and finds granting the material revisions not to be consistent with, and then it says sound educational practice and interests of the community. I think, I'm not sure if sound educational practices, I think they have sound educational practices there, I think it's more that we were saying interests of the community, which is why there was a denial. Is that, could that be crossed out? I don't know if you, you'd have to agree to that, but it's just a suggestion I had.
This is the board. Are we okay with that? Okay.
Totally agree.
The only thing, other thing I noticed is on the first page, um, where it first states, uh, where it, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, um, it just says PYLSD instead of PYLUSD. I don't know if that makes a difference, but.
This is what happens when you're rushing back. We just need a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-four twelve.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck, a second by Mrs. Quintero. Um, we'll do a, a roll call, Mrs. Blades.
Aye.
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 And I am an aye, so the motion carries five to zero. And with that, we need to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Blades, a second by Mrs. Quintero and Mrs., um, Blades?
Aye.
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 Aye, and I am also an aye. Motion carries five to zero and the meeting is adjourned at ten twenty-nine.